We're calling the Athletics and Wellness Subcommittee Meeting to order. And we have before us this evening is our Athletic Director Kevin Mahoney, who's going to speak to us about the winter season and the upcoming spring season. So Kevin, it's all yours.
Basketball program at Quincy High. They ended up winning the Fisher Division this season and then qualifying for the state tournament. They were the nine seed in Division One. They won a home game against Hopkinton and then when we went to Lexington but lost by one. A really, really tight game. But Coach Conlon did a great job this year with the team she had. A lot of those girls actually will be returning next year, a lot of underclassmen. So proud of what they've accomplished this season, including our ju- one of the juniors at Quincy High, Alyssa Hops, actually was named the MVP for this season and back-to-back actually because she got it last year as a sophomore. So bright future ahead for Alyssa. And you know, for sportsmanship purposes, I- the girls' basketball team, along with girls' ice hockey and the Q and Q boys' swimming, were all named the sportsmanship overall team for the Patriot League Fisher Division. So continuing along, we had two sectional state champ- sectional champions in wrestling this year. The first time, there were actually two students at Quincy High School, two seniors, Edwin Vino and Matthew Nellany. This was the first time since 2016 that it happened. So two kids that put in a ton of effort and work in their sport of wrestling, so paid off. They both went on to States where they both placed seventh. So great seasons for them and the program as a whole. So and then continuing along with some more individual highlights, but our track star, Sal Mbukatam at Quincy High, continued to have a great, a great senior year and career at Quincy High. Finished third overall in her Division Two MIA Championships. She runs in the 1,000 meters, went on to the Meet of Champions where she placed fifth. And then she, along with three students at North Quincy, are on a relay team together that placed fourth at that Meet of Champions event that qualified them for nationals. So great, great career for Salma. I think she's off to UMass Amherst next year to run, so another great, great career. And then we had one of our junior male athletes, Jaden Francois on track. He placed seventh overall in the 55-meter hurdles. And then I threw on the final records there for your reference this season. Little, little bit better, better season this year around for boys' basketball. Obviously, girls' basketball had a great year. Bit of a struggle for our boys' ice hockey program. The girls' ice hockey had our new coach this year, little bit record-wise, better than last year. And then our, our Q and Q programs have been pretty consistent in swimming and indoor track. Continuing along over at North Quincy High School, participation was a little bit higher. We had 260 students. Mainly the, the big difference in numbers, probably girls' basketball, swimming program and track program, had the higher numbers compared to Quincy High School. We had 13 Patriot League All-Stars over there, listed there for, for reference. And then sort of more individual highlights and some team highlights. Ava Bryan, North Quincy Senior, girls' basketball player, reached 1,000-point milestone this year. She's had a great career over at North in, in multiple sports. So very proud of Ava and helped lead, helped the team qualify for the state tournament this year. They, they were the number 20 seed in Division Two and lost a very tight game at Whitman Hansen in the first round. But great season overall. Had Coach Cunningham, a new coach this year, did a great job with the girls. Everybody seemed to, to buy in and play, play hard. So is a fun, fun group to watch. And then our North Quincy Boys Hockey, they did qualify for the state tournament this year. They were the number 32 seed in Division Three and we hosted a game at Quincy Youth Arena, but unfortunately lost in that preliminary game to Diamond Regional. North Quincy Senior Kenny Guan, he's a, a boys', on the boys' swimming team. He was named MVP of the Patriot League Fisher Division this year. He actually was the MVP last year as well, so back-to-back MVPs. But a bigger accomplishment, I guess, would be he finished first overall in the cell sectionals in the 50-yard freestyle. Not sure the last time that had happened, but for one of our swimmers to finish first in a large pool of schools around the cell sectional is pretty impressive. So Kenny's had a really good career. Wish him the best moving forward. He went on to States and placed sixth in the, in the 50, in the 50 free. And then as, as I mentioned, the girls' hockey and Q and Q Swim, that overall team sportsmanship award for the Fisher Division. And then more North Quincy track athletes, individual highlights, but Aluna Coogan-Coins, a senior over there, she runs in the mile. She finished third at the MIAs and then advanced to the Meet of Champions where she finished eighth. And then a sophomore, Maddie McGillicuddy, also placed third in, she runs the 600 meter. So third at the divisionals and then went on to the Meet of Champions where they, where she finished eighth. So and then final records as well for the, a lot of the Q and Q records are already from the previous page, but boys' basketball there, girls' basketball and then boys' hockey. So girls, girls and boys were tournament teams. Boys, boys' basketball did not make it to the tournament this year. So overall, that, that's, that's the winter season. Mr. Begoli, if you, we start there with questions and then I can trans- continue to the spring.
Any questions for Mr. Mahoney? Mrs. Lebo.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Mahoney, I was just wondering, you brought up the sportsmanship award. It's always great to see.
Turn your mic.
I'm sorry. I was just wondering, you brought up the sportsmanship award, which is really great to see, but I was wondering if you had a chance to look at those NEAS standards, the athletic standards that NEAS put out?
I haven't had a chance to, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Pridios.
Just describe, what, what, what are the qualifications for a team sportsmanship award? What is that? Can you just describe that a little bit?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, so the, each, each season after each season, the Patriot League coaches get together and do an end-of-season meeting with the, the coaches and one of the ADs as a representative. And then the coaches will actually vote on a specific team that they felt that displayed, you know, sportsmanship throughout the season. So you know, we had a couple of teams qualify for it, so I think it's, it's a good indicator of, you know, how our kids are represented across this, the league, you know, when we go to their facilities and compete against their teams.
That's for sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's great.
On the sportsmanship, Mike Stan, the NEAS standards, we'll make sure that we review those and we'll present at the next presentation to the school committee so you can get a thorough understanding of what those are.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the spring, Kevin, can you explain how one school can have teams in Division One, Division Two and Division Three?
Yep, so they, so basically, at this point, it's a two-year cycle from the MIA standard, standards. They typically base it off of enrollment, but they won't necessarily look at this year's enrollment. They'll look at it from, you know, a couple of years back when they make these. You can appeal for them to, to move down in division, but at that point, they'll, they'll look at a multitude of facets. What I've tried to do in the last couple of years is actually do that appeal process.
A lot of our coaches from communication and where I sit, I guess, competitive piece, I would think a lot of our programs would fall in that Division Two ring. Unfortunately, sometimes they're appealed or denied and we end up having to say.
Is it off again? Sorry. I'm sorry.
Yes, basically, MIA, MIA will, will send out their divisional breakdown and then there is an appeal process for, you know, Division One. You can appeal, I probably do appeal in the last couple of years.
Years to, to have most of our programs go down to D2. They do look at the enrollment as like a big factor and obviously where our, our two schools are at. But it is, it is interesting to, to see that, you know, North Quincy might have a team in D3, but you know, another team in D2. So but we, you know, we've looked at those numbers, tried to do the appeal process to see where we might fall. So we're, we're definitely looking at them from year to year.
Do they split depending on boys' and girls' enrollment or they just look at the overall enrollment?
Just the overall school enrollment.
Okay.
Yep.
I just noticed, I couldn't, it just jumped out at me that we only had one team from each school with a winning record, which is a little disconcerting for me. Is there any pattern or?
I don't know if it's a pattern. I think it's, I think it's cyclical, like we, we run into, you know, obviously, last couple of years, I just, I just look at boys' basketball and North Quincy's been successful. You know, and then, you know, this year, if you consider it a down year, but still, still compete. The last couple of years Quincy boys have struggled, but you know, kind of doing a rebuild with a new coach and you know, kids are buying in and whatnot. So you know, and then girls' basketball, you know, right now they have a good group, but in a couple of years they'll end up graduating and stuff. So it could be, I feel like it's cyclical, tough, you know, obviously the league's competitive, trying to keep up with them. But you know, continue to evaluate and you know, move forward best we can.
My own personal perspective, I think probably our biggest difficulty is that we have two high schools drawing on a finite number of, of kids in the system.
Yep.
And North draws from one and a half middle schools and Quincy draws from three and a half. So I mean, that's, that's always been the way it's been.
Yep.
And I understand how that came to be.
Sure. Yeah, it's, it's definitely different from the teams we play in our league, right? So they'll, they'll draw from one middle school and be able to build from that, that, you know, one youth program, if you will, with the two high schools and kids can go either way, kind of run into that for sure.
Mrs. Cahill.
You want to drill off to me? The, the operation that I have with, with both of our schools.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Both teams were great.
Yeah. Yeah. No, they were, they were fun to watch. I, the first game again at North Quincy was, ended up being a buzzer beater, but it was an unbelievable game, really fun atmosphere. Yeah, they were really successful and still, you know, bright future, a lot of young talent coming up and yeah, so good things, of course. Yeah.
Maybe we should consider basketball to be, to have a forum for the other coaches and maybe they can talk about, you know, their techniques and how to motivate their students.
Yeah, a lot of former players that have come through, yeah.
But yeah, no, so it's, it's a hard thing to do, but that's great. The girls are doing well.
Yes.
Just ask Superintendent about, we have a mentor program for teachers. Do we have one for our coaches? And if not, why not?
We, we don't have one like on the books at all. I, I do try to, especially for the younger coaches that come in, I do, you know, recommend to them kind of linking up with some of our older coaches. This is a lot of conversations that, what's that?
You mean more experienced?
More experienced, excuse me. There's actually a lot of conversations that me and Mr. Tag had at Quincy about, you know, when we think of a younger coach that, that came in, you know, linking her, he or him, her up with a more experienced coach. So something to look, look at as well. We've, we did, we have had a lot of turnover the last couple of years and new coaches, you know, coming in. Some of our more experienced coaches that have been around for a while that have just stepped away. So it's definitely something to look at from a more, you know, structured standpoint.
And how do our salaries compare to surrounding communities? I know that a couple of years ago, they were on the lower end and I'm not sure we rectified that in the last negotiating session.
Yeah, I, we typically in the league, we try to share like the data amongst, you know, whether it's user fees or, or salary stuff. I would say we're, we're fairly similar to where most schools are at in our league. If you look at, you know, if you look at the head, head coach stipends specifically, you know, like with football and, and boys' basketball and, and boys' hockey, you're on the higher side from, from our structure, but that's, that's, I would say it's pretty comparable to the teams in our league when we, when we've looked at data.
And I'm sorry, did you want to say something?
I, I had a question.
Hold on.
Did you, did?
Your honor, right.
Are the stipends different for all the coaches?
Mm-hmm.
Men and women?
Correct.
No.
No. Sport, sport by sport.
Sport by sport?
So and then level, like varsity too.
So boys' basketball, coach would be the same as the, okay.
Yep.
That's all I need.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, I was wondering, Ms. Mahoney, if you could, the next time we have a meeting, give us a, an overview of what kind of PD and onboarding the coaches get.
Sure.
Just a couple more questions, Kevin. I know the tournament structure has changed in the last couple of years, trying to mirror the college way to evaluate records and who should be in the tournament and who should not be. Now see, like I saw four or five teams with losing records in the tournament, which I think waters down the tournament frankly.
Yeah.
And then it's a statewide tournament, now it's not, it's not sectional anymore.
Correct.
So a Quincy team could be traveling out to Weston, Mass.
Correct.
For a game in midweek. And how does the MIA justify that when there's, when their focus is supposed to be on student athletes?
Yep.
Student athletes, not athletes.
Mm-hmm.
I just find that hard to.
Yeah. No, that's, it's definitely been brought up at a lot of our, our AD meetings with the MIA folks. There's a lot of pros and cons, I guess, to the tournament. Going away from the sectional before, you know, the teams out west had a, a easier road, if you will, to, to go to the, to move along in the tournament compared to the cell sectional. But the other factor too, Mr. Begoli, is the, the margin of victory piece is a big, a big topic right now. So there, there's a few ADs that are coming together to kind of discuss the margin of victory piece. A lot of us feel, including myself personally, don't think that, that should have really any say. There's like a sportsmanship factor in that. You shouldn't have to win a game by more than 10, you know, 10 points in a basketball game. A win's a win in my eyes, but it does hold weight in the current system. So there's a lot of back, back and forth on that piece.
Right, but what it does inadvertently or?
Oh, yeah.
It, it doesn't allow for the kids on the end of the bench to get in games.
Correct.
Because the coach is under the pressure to win by X amount of points, therefore those other kiddos don't get a chance to, to play.
Yep.
They practice every day, they pay the same user fee.
Yep.
And it's not right. It just, I, I just can't, I can't, I can't square it.
Yep.
And I just, I just have a, a real problem with the new tournament format and all the things that have gone into it. We're not a college, we're a high school.
Yep.
So. When I was coaching a couple of years ago, there was a big, we had a big, we have eight, coaches means the beginning of the year, as you know.
Yep.
And the big push then was to have huddle as the main way to scout teams, to share information.
Share film, yep.
Yeah. And it appears as if most of the teams in the Patriot League have complied. There are a couple that have not. Has that been addressed? You home speaking hours specifically?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Some of the south.
Yeah, the premise, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, I think that's grossly unfair to, we spent a lot of money installing huddle into our venues.
Yep.
And we share our information with everybody and it's, it just, it, it's not being done.
Yep.
So how does that get addressed, Kevin?
Yeah, we typically at the, at the end-of-season meetings, they'll, they'll address it at that point. We talked about it at our last AD meeting, moving forward, how, you know, different schools are addressing that. Because they, they'll share it in like football. They haven't really talked about it with like soccer and lacrosse, but we have that option to film here. So if, if the schools have the cameras outside at, at our facilities, we have the two in the gym, but we are lucky enough to have the camera at Veterans and Creden.
Right.
So there, there's been some talk about how do we, you know, do we make that move with soccer, lacrosse, et cetera? So football and basketball, the two big ones. But yeah, we're, we're talking, we're telling the schools, I, I think they run into it a lot with football too, with the, with the sharing of information before, you know, their game the week before. So making sure all the coaches are on board. But from our standpoint, we, we haven't run into it like from our, my own, our own coaches. Everybody's been compliant with stuff, so.
No, I'm not saying Quincy doesn't comply.
No, yeah, yep.
I'm saying that there are all the school systems that don't comply.
Yep.
And I think that's grossly unfair to, to us as a, as a sports community.
Sure.
And I'd like to have it addressed by you at.
Absolutely.
At the next AD's meeting, when you guys get together.
Yep.
Or women.
You got it.
Okay. Thank you, I've taken enough time.
Hi.
Sorry. Let me find you for us.
There's a Tina, she's already on.
Here.
She's on already.
All right, your honor.
Thank you, appreciate it, thanks. Mr. Begoli actually brought up in the margin of error conversation about the kids at the end of the bench kind of not getting that playtime.
Yeah.
It kind of made me wonder, how many of our sports don't have a JV team?
I'm just trying to look at for winter aspect. So like the, the tracks and the swimming, girls' hockey, boys' hockey, we did do a combined team this year just to kind of allow some folk, some kids to, to get some time. And then our boys', boys' basketball programs and girls' basketball programs both had JV, actually they all, they all had three levels, which was good to see. But yeah, no, that is definitely where some of those students would, you know, hopefully get some experience, you know, at the JV level or sub varsity level in general.
Right, and those sports that don't have JV, do you always kind of, excuse me, look to try to make one or somehow? Because I know, you know, specifically with the ice hockey.
Yeah.
There's definitely a lot of kids that, you know, are decent kids that have played since they were little.
Yeah.
And just, you know, they can't kind of compete at the higher level, but that JV team would be a really great opportunity for them if there's any way to make that happen.
Of course.
So if we, you know, even if we kind of look to, I mean, I know it's already combined, so, but.
Yep, yeah, no, we, we.
Kind of get creative.
Yeah, yeah, trying to, trying to get creative, but kind of just looking at the numbers to see if it's possible to, to have enough to, to have, you know, some structured games with some local teams. I don't, there is, especially in, just you mentioned girls' hockey, I don't, there's a, there is a lot of teams that I don't necessarily think they have sub varsity, but if we're able to find some, we can try to get creative with it to try to make, you know, more opportunities.
That'd be great, just, yeah, it just gets those kids on the end of the bench, like Ms. Begoli was saying, a little more time, playtime. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Can you differentiate between JV1, JV2 and freshman?
Yep, so we have, some JV2 programs might not necessarily include all freshmen.
Can you tell me what JV2 is? It's something that came to the fore about three, four years ago.
JV2 is our hybrid freshman with some sophomores mixed in.
Is that because we don't have kids?
No, not, basically to give those sophomores an opportunity to play.
It's not to fill the freshman level?
Yeah, like basically to have that third level, correct.
All right, thank you. Spring season.
Yeah, so we're, today was our third day of the spring season, so we, we just started on Monday. Participation looks really good right now, numbers-wise look, compared to last spring, slight increases in, in a few sports. So looking at the numbers, like these are the sports that we'll offer this spring. Boys, for baseball, they'll, they'll both have a varsity and JV level. One thing that's new this year will be our Q and Q softball program. So we, both teams had a varsity-only level last year. This year we combined the programs, they both roughly with signups have 11 kids. So we're, we kind of taking what we just talked about, getting a little bit creative with some of the younger kids on that team to maybe find them some JV type of games, but they'll be a combined program for this spring. Our girls' lacrosse programs, both very good numbers. Quincy, I think we'll have, end up having three levels and North will have two. And then our Q and Q boys have been combined for a bit, but those numbers are actually increasing. We have a big freshman class that came in this year, so those numbers are positive moving forward. Boys' volleyball, extremely popular at both high schools. Each team will have three teams. Unfortunately, had to make some cuts. We had a lot of kids try out for those this week, so. And then our boys', boys' and girls' tennis programs, specifically at North Quincy, those numbers are extremely high, especially on the girls' side. But you know, pop, popular sport amongst our students. And then the, to round out the, the Q and Q programs are outdoor track, girls' golf and sailing program for the spring season. So right now, like I said, numbers look really good compared to last year. Few, few spots that are higher than last year, which is a good sign, so. And we've been lucky to have some good weather the first two days, so hopefully it continues. Our kids were outside on the first day, so you know, thank you to Dave Murphy at the Parks Department and, and their crew. Fields are in good shape, so happy to be out there, getting the kids outside.
Mrs. Pridios.
Just to go back to what we were talking about with the winter season, so how many of the, the spring season coaches, are any of them new this year and could we support, give them any additional support if there are any new ones?
Yeah, let me just run through. So we will, we'll have, at Quincy High School, have a new girls' tennis coach. She's a teacher in the, or she wears in guidance in the building. Our boys' coach has been around a while, they kind of practice together. And the former coach is a teacher at Quincy, so they've kind of already had some meetings set up. And then girls' golf is new compared to the coach from last year, but it's Coach Salvucci who's our boys' coach on the Quincy High side, so he's taken over that program.
Sounds good, thank you.
Kevin, I noticed that you have 10 spring sports. Five of them are combined.
Yep.
Is that a trend that's going towards combined? Because I noticed the softball's combined this year.
Yeah. It's.
Excuse me.
Trend, I, I don't know if it's a trend. A lot of, we try to, try to have conversations with the coaches about the youth levels. Lacrosse being very popular is kind of affecting those softball numbers. The youth numbers at softball just aren't, aren't really high right now, so. And we knew going into this year, both programs would be pretty low, especially having only varsity last year, so combined there, but lacro- like girls' lacrosse is big and, and as I said, boys' lacrosse, the numbers are big right now with a good, and within a really nice freshman group coming in, like that are, that are currently on the squad. So you know, with the combined teams, I guess the goal is to build the programs to, I guess, eventually separate, but we'll have to see, you know, usually those are like two-year agreements, so. Track, extremely popular, tons of kids, but this is the second year of that combined co-op, so next year might be two separate teams potentially. But very probably, like the, the numbers for track right now are, are through the roof, so a lot of kids getting out and playing.
How difficult is it to have, to get kids out for the team if the coach is not in the building?
I think it plays a factor, for sure, yeah, because you're, you know, as a, if you're a teacher in the building, you can try to recruit. But you know, do our best on our end too to promote our programs, get kids, you know, interested now, have team meetings after school, things like that to try to help them get interested to sign up. A lot of the coaches will do like, especially for the spring, they'll do a sign-up meeting in, you know, January, February, try to get an idea of numbers, give them some logistics about the season and then, you know, move forward, that.
Does the MIA, MIAA still got a rule in place where you cannot, if you're a high school coach, talk to middle school kids before a certain date? I never saw a date in the, in the rules to MIA, but we always seem to follow one here in Quincy.
Yeah, I, there's, MIA-wise, I don't, there's no date.
There is no date.
No, yeah, yeah.
So.
You just gotta, obviously just be, in terms of like. You just gotta, obviously just be, in terms of like recruiting, they have their, they have their, their breakdown for recruiting, but just open conversations with kids, you know, talking about our programs.
Well, that's, that was my point.
Yeah, yeah.
If you want to go down and talk about your program, that, I mean, when I was coaching, I couldn't go to Point Webster, I couldn't go to Brown Meadows, I couldn't go to Sterling at the time, because they were not feeding into North Quincy High School. I could only go to Central and Atlantic. So to promote my, my program, I would, I would ask the principal if I could announce any girl, a boy, who might be interested in the particular sport, if they could come down for a meeting.
Sure.
And that's, I don't, I'm not sure that that's breaking a rule. Or that's, I don't think that's recruiting either.
Yeah.
I think it's just explaining what the program is and promoting the program.
Sure.
So.
I would agree, yeah.
You would agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Kathy, good to hear from you.
Thank you. Was baseball the only program that you had tryouts for that kids did not make the team? And approximately how many kids are we talking about?
Um, no, that, we, we unfortunately did have to make cuts in volleyball. Both programs had, I would say upwards of 65 kids that tried out, but each team typically takes roughly around 15 total, so you're talking about 45, yeah. So there's a lot, there ends up being a lot of cuts that happen in, in the sport. She's extremely popular in the city. The, the, the teams that we end up playing against, a lot of them don't even have that third level, so we keep a freshman team. And then we try, I try, you know, try, in terms of scheduling, try to get as many games for them as we can with, with local teams in the area or if we have to travel or have a team come in, just to allow them to get some games. So it's not, I guess it's not as popular in, in other districts or cities, but a lot of volleyball is just massive in Quincy, so unfortunately tough, you know, to make cuts, so.
The kids that don't, that don't make the teams, do we do any kind of follow up to kind of encourage them to do another sport or?
Yeah. Yep, so we'll like, we don't, a lot of these don't, don't do cuts, we'll, we'll encourage them to do track for sure, or like tennis if they, if they want to try to learn the sport. You know, and then we could, there's been discussions over the years to maybe see if anybody might be in the, like in the building, might want to do some like early bird stuff, like I know that's popular in the middle school level, but it's definitely, even on the girls' side, it's a big, you know, it's, it's a big draw, so allowing those opportunities is, is important.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So one more question. There is no, a no cut policy. There is no no cut policy. Am I correct?
Yeah.
That cutting, quote, cutting is allowed.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's very unfortunate.
It is unfortunate. I never cut a kid in all my whole career.
Yeah.
Ever.
Yeah.
I had 22 kids in my JV basketball team.
Yeah. If we can prevent it, we, that's what we try, we definitely try to do that.
I, I think it should be prevented at all costs.
Yeah.
Any else?
Yeah. Yeah, I just threw this at the bottom for the middle school piece. We did, since we last met, we had our, our wrestling program, coed wrestling program, good numbers there. Currently swimming is going on. Saturday is the, the swim championship meet at Lincoln Hancock, and then we'll have spring track in the, in the spring, so. And there's hundreds of kids at Faxon Field that, that week.
What time's the meet?
Um, it starts at, there's warmups at eight, it will start right around nine. Yeah.
Any else? Thank you, Ms. Mahoney.
Thank you, thank you all. Mayor Koch, thank you to Commissioner Murphy. Our fields are in great shape. Teams are out there on day one.
Meeting adjourned.
Thanks for having me. Take care.
Changing regards.
Now I'm on. Right? So let's call for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We have two memoriams this evening. If you could please keep these individuals and their families in your thoughts and prayers as they have passed away since our last meeting. The first is Ralph Frazier, physical education teacher and football coach at North Quincy High School for 12 years. And next is Linda Jablonski, school bus driver for 40 years, as well as a shop steward that I work with regularly, making sure that all of our bus driver needs were met. Linda was a fantastic employee and a better person. If we could keep in our thoughts and prayers these individuals and their families, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Superintendent, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Burgoli.
Present.
Mrs. Cahill.
Present.
Mr. Gatto. Mrs. Hubley.
Present.
Mrs. Lebo.
Present.
Mrs. Perdios.
Present.
Mayor Koch.
Present.
Quincy High School student representative Nina Altacreti.
Present.
And North Quincy High School student representative Arlie Dyla.
Present.
Thank you both for being here tonight.
So can we have approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Hubley, second by Mrs. Lebo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next we'll move to open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or an employee of the Quincy Public Schools. Non-community, non-community persons not permitted to speak at open forum must submit written statements to the school committee. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Interested parties may also submit a written statement to Quincy, QSC Open Forum at QuincyPublicSchools.com. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do we have anyone here who's wished to speak?
Thank you. RO14 Lois Terrace, please excuse my voice. You good? Thank you. I'm here again to speak about the importance of establishing Lunar New Year as a school holiday. Rather than talking about the data or relying on a survey from a weak representation of parents, let's talk about the facts. It's a fact that the cities and towns across the Commonwealth and across the country do not have school because of religious and cultural reasons, which causes low attendance. It's a fact that the states of California, Washington, New York, Colorado, New Jersey have Lunar New Year off. It's a fact that Quincy is a changing city. It's a fact that the majority of students in Quincy Public Schools are of Asian descent. It's a fact that Lunar New Year celebration dates in Quincy are days of low attendance. It's a fact that teachers do very little in their classrooms that day because of low attendance. It's a fact that an absence goes on your record, whether it's excused or unexcused, and ruins perfect attendance at the status. On January 29th next year, you should apologize to those students who are seeking perfect attendance and must forfeit celebrating with their parents to spend a day doing puzzles, watching movies, and having study periods to keep their perfect attendance status. Kudos to you, Mrs. Perdios, for understanding the value of accepting the Asian culture as part of the Quincy community. Thank you, Courtney, for being in touch with the majority of your students and families. If you all truly represented our students and families, you would also respect and embrace the culture of this majority. It's time for a change. Grant them this holiday. Thank you.
My name is Shivpreet Singh and 511 Hancock Street. Before I start my letter, I want to express my gratitude to Mayor Koch, to Mr. Mulvey, and to Erin, because they have always supported us whenever we did something to build the community, whether through the Quincy Multicultural Festival, or we are celebrating holy for the first time in Quincy, and the city has been very supportive to us. And with this great hope, I read my letter. Dear school committee members, today I stand here in support of QPS recognizing the Lunar New Year as a holiday. As per the DOE website, QPS is 39.5% of Asian ethnicity. Lunar New, Lunar New Year is the biggest and most important festival celebrated by this community. It's of huge significance to them and their families. From the recently concluded QPS survey about holidays, it's clear that majority of parents, 43%, agreed, strongly agreed, staff, 42%, agreed, strongly agreed, in supporting the Lunar New Year as a holiday in the QPS calendar. Statistics is a fascinating science, you know, I'm a student of statistics, and the conclusion is dependent on an individual, how we interpret it. Hence, instead of adding the neutrals to disagree, I choose to add them to agree and strongly agree. And with that, we have a clear majority of 69% of parents and 63% of staff in favor of Lunar New Year being recognized as a holiday. With data from the QPS conducted survey, 1,200 signatures from a previous petition initiated by QPS, students and an overwhelming majority of parents speaking for Lunar New Year as a holiday in this very forum for two consecutive years, I'm wondering that why are we, what is stopping us from, from recognizing Lunar New Year as a holiday? I haven't heard one person speak against, you know, having it as a holiday at this forum. It's increasingly looking to me as a person of color that our celebrations don't matter. It's showing the school committee to be not very inclusive. I think this is a huge opportunity for the school committee to be a catalyst for community building, inclusion, and support of its diverse demographic. But the continuous finding reasons for not recognizing Lunar New Year as a holiday is making it look completely the opposite. It's making every DIA effort by QPS seem like a checkmark, a lip service. I sincerely hope that's not the case, because I respect the school committee. We know that where there is a will, there is a way. When we have a compelling reason to change the calendar, we can do it without much fuss. Case in point, the election day, the presidential primaries. As I finish, I will say that it's up to the school committee on how it wants to be remembered, at what legacy it wants to carry. Does it want to be remembered truly as an inclusive and committed to building community or as a meme that chose to turn a blind eye to its community? We'll be here every year representing our community and getting our rightful honor in the community. We, we're not going to go away. And I close this with a small factoid from Hopkins Public Schools. It has 30% Asian population, most of it is Indian, and they have Diwali as a holiday. And this increases the community pride in the school system manyfold. They feel wanted, respected, seen, and proud. This increases the community's commitment to the school system. They feel that they belong.
Jana Mulcarren, 54, Virginia Road. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak here. I'm here to support including Lunar New Year as an observed holiday on the QPS academic calendar. Little bit of different data than what Shiv had, but I have a citation here from your website, QPS website. Asian students comprise the largest demographic of our district at 40.2% on our site here, narrowly edging out 39.9% for white students, followed by single-digit representation for the other demographics that are noted there. 8.4 Hispanic, 7.4 Black, 3.7 multirace, and less than 1% Native American or Pacific Islander. While I am not an expert on survey design, I do have a doctorate in education, as well as graduate and doctoral level research study experience conducting higher ed surveys, so I was disheartened by what I consider a flawed design of the survey sent to the QPS families. The survey conflated the loud request by our community Lunar New Year observants with many other holidays. And a late, leading question, which I consider leading, which I'll paraphrase, because I don't have a copy of the survey, seemed to make an all or nothing choice between add all holidays or keep the calendar as is, which was unfair. Have we even heard the request for all the other holidays listed on the survey? The survey didn't include an open-ended question or any opportunity to add supporting comments as qualitative data to enrich results. Conducting a completely quantitative survey on such a topic seems short-sighted. A mixed methods design would have yielded more robust results with explanations. I did not have the chance to voice my discomfort in answering the leading question for which would force askew results. I may have been one of those middle people, because I didn't know which, you know, I don't want to say I want all holidays, but I definitely want Lunar New Year, but that wasn't an option. While many of the proposed holidays in the survey were religious observances, Lunar New Year is a cultural holiday observed by Asians with a heritage in various religions from many, many countries. And since Asians make up our biggest student population, and that population has loudly voiced the need for this day off for a long time, observing it, even while it's not yet a federal holiday, is the right thing to do. I worked for a university which began observing Juneteenth years before it was a federal holiday because it was the right thing to do. I haven't heard the same requests for all other holidays on a survey, but they could be considered later and could still be offered as excused absences until we have more data on the negative impacts or hardships not having those holidays may pose. We've heard that from our Asian community. Finally, I've heard the concern about extending the academic calendar by another day, and I do get that. So if that remains a major barrier, I'd like to offer a potential solution. It may not be favorable, but I'm a practicing Catholic and I would gladly swap Lunar New Year for Good Friday, because Good Friday, it's not a holy day of obligation. It's the only day of the year where Mass is not celebrated in the Catholic Church, and I have a citation on that here too. And any services or stations lacrosse generally happen at 3:00 PM or later, which is after school. It's a day of fasting and abstinence of meat and quiet reflection on the hour of Christ's death at 3:00 PM. And practicing Christians can do all of those things while school is still in session. Our Muslim community fasts for 30 days during Ramadan without having school off. Election Day, you can add that back in too. I'm not, I'm fine with my kid being in his classroom for lunch while people vote, if that's another option. Kindly include Lunar New Year as recognized, as a recognized QPS holiday in the upcoming academic calendar and, and forward. Thank you for your consideration.
So I'm not here for Lunar New Year, I'm here for a different reason, which was on March 7th, Mr. Gilbert told me that I'd be ending my term as school committee representative, and I just wanted to preface the statement by saying, I'm sure Arlie will do a great job, and I have my full faith in him. But my critique is not on this situation, but on how, the handling of the situation. And it's not the people involved, but just how it was handled, I was given. And it's not the people involved, but just how it was handled, I was given no notice. And when I asked him for clarification on why this happened, he was extremely vague, and I was just told to just stop coming. And so I'm here now, but that's not the point. I asked my student council advisor, like, why this was happening, and she was like, it's not you, there's like something else that's happening, and you just have to accept it. And I realized, like, I've accepted it now because I have to, but I also realize, like, I don't know why. And it frustrates me because I thought I had until the end of the year. And I'm okay with walking away now, but I was never given a why, and it does make me upset sometimes, but, like, and I understand the need for multiple viewpoints and multiple points of diversity, but I was never spoken to, and I was told just once that it's over and it's done. And I sent him an email that weekend, and I asked him, like, why? And then he told me the next day at school that I just essentially, it was what it was, and that I'd have to walk away. And I've accepted it, and I'm okay, and I'm 100% sure Arlie will represent our school in the best way because I have faith in him. And this is not about him, but it's about how I wasn't told anything, and I don't want this to ever happen to someone else because you can't just tell someone to walk away from a position that they, and not tell them why, or tell them, give them reasoning. And if my hearing was right, he told me there was something that happened last year in an election, but I don't have recollection of it. Maybe I hit my head too hard, I don't know. But, like, I'm okay with it. I'm at peace, but I want closure, I want to know why. And he, the reasoning was that he wanted people to only have half-year terms, so my term was supposed to end in January, but I was never told in January, and it was just so sudden and so inexplicable that I felt that I had to come or I would look, I would look in the future in my, I would look like a few years down the road, and I would ask myself, why? And I don't, I just want to know why. I just, that's all I want. So I'm here, and maybe I can get answers, but I don't know if I can. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Okay. Mrs. Owens, you have some letters, emails?
Yes, I have several letters that were sent into the open form email address. The first is from Bartol New Jay. Dear Mayor, Members of the School Committee and Superintendent, I am ready to advocate for recognizing the Lunar New Year as a school calendar holiday if it falls on a weekday. While I applaud the effort to pulse the community on this issue as an action item from last year's meetings, I was disappointed in the design and execution of the school calendar survey. There were facts omitted from the communication, such as the survey was a direct result of advocacy for the Lunar New Year, the total number of school days remains the same regardless of the number of days added as holidays to the calendar, and that the majority of school systems around the country begin school before Labor Day and only have one week of spring break. Without these key facts, an uninformed survey taker would likely be misled to think someone was advocating for fewer school days or suggesting a school calendar scheme that was out of the ordinary. I was further disappointed that the Lunar New Year was buried in the survey after several other cultural or religious holidays, even though it was the catalyst for the study. The study is designed based on equality rather than equity. The E in DEI in EDI stands for equity. Equity is doing the right thing. Equality is the same thing for everyone regardless of whether it is the right thing to do. We boast about how great DEI is in our schools, but we continue to strive to treat everyone equally. Despite being the majority in several Quincy schools, Asians lack representation in the calendar, staff, and curriculum. During a public meeting about returning to school post-COVID, I asked if the schools prepared any special education on Asian hate. The response I received was, the schools have anti-discrimination education for all races. This was a time when Asian hate crimes had risen to an alarming rate around the country, and Asian students were afraid to go out into public. Today, many organizations use the letter B when discussing DEI, DEIB. B stands for belonging. If you want our students to thrive in our community, they must first feel belonging. Ignoring their advocacy in the name of equality does not encourage belonging. In summary, I ask you to do the right thing by recognizing the Lunar New Year as a holiday in the school calendar. As suggested last year, you should review the school calendar against the city's population makeup and adjust periodically. The study was not framed or appropriately designed for the community to inquire about the Lunar New Year. However, you cannot deny that you have heard your constituents passionately advocate that Asians should be represented on the school calendar. Please vote yes to recognizing the Lunar New Year as a day off. The next letter is from Laurie Earl. Dear Committee, I wholly support Quincy Public Schools having Lunar New Year as a holiday. We have a diverse community here in Quincy, which brings tremendous perspective and strength to our city. Many public schools in our country have holidays for ancient U.S. history. We have other holidays such as St. Patrick's Day honoring folks representing our Irish heritage. Other holidays have backgrounds related to religion and faith. Holidays in local public schools should be seen as opportunities to celebrate the diversity of our community. In this light, these holidays might change over decades and even centuries as populations change. Honoring the Lunar New Year, such an important holiday to our Asian-American friends and neighbors, is very fitting, and I fully support this suggestion. Attention School Committee members, the EDI Subcommittee of the Citywide PTO is requesting that school committee make the appropriate and needed changes to the approved holidays in the 2024-2025 QPS school year calendar by recognizing Lunar New Year as an approved school holiday. This request comes with the continued spirit of collaborative work the EDI Subcommittee has had in the last few years with not only with QPS, but also with the school committee and its members. The EDI Subcommittee has been steadfast in the last two years, supporting and recognizing the voices of parents, caregivers, students, in their unrelenting determination to recognize Lunar New Year as an approved school holiday in the school calendar. This was first demonstrated in 2022, when the EDI Subcommittee completed their own holiday survey, and overwhelming the parent caregivers within our Subcommittee membership, 49.2% of those surveyed identified Lunar New Year as a holiday to be recognized. The Subcommittee again supported this recognition in 2023 by supporting the student-driven petition from the North Quincy High School students, who diligently pursued signatures from students, not only at the high schools but also at the middle schools, parents and caregivers, teachers, staff, community supporters, and business owners, with an overwhelming and resounding 1,220 signatures in support of this holiday being added for the 2023-24 QPS calendar. Again, it was not supported. Again, parent caregiver student community voices were not recognized by the school committee. Based on the 2023-24 DZ Race and Ethnicity data for Quincy Public Schools, 39.5% of students identify as Asian as compared to 37.1% who identify as white. Even four years ago, the 2020 census data identified Asian-American Pacific Islanders as representing a majority percentage of the QPS population and community as a whole. One holiday most celebrated by Asians, predominantly Chinese, Vietnamese, and Koreans, who make up a large portion of the QPS Asian population, is Lunar New Year. The EDI Subcommittee members struggle with the lack of forward movement by the school committee, who are voted to represent all QPS students, families, parents, and caregivers. How has this group of elected officials continued to ignore the empirical evidence in front of them? Facts are facts. We are continuing to disrespect all our families and students who make up this majority population in QPS by not recognizing Lunar New Year. We are far behind other communities who have recognized it, even communities whose population is not as closely representative as our majority AAPI population in Quincy. We need to catch up and celebrate the people who call Quincy home and call QPS their schools. The EDI Subcommittee is requesting Lunar New Year be added to the QPS 2024-25 school calendar. Within AAPI, QPS community as rich and diverse as we have in Quincy, it is important that all our students and families feel they are seen and included. By recognizing this holiday through the addition to the school calendar, the school committee would be reaffirming their commitment to build a strong diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging culture in community in QPS. Make the right choice and vote in favor of bringing this equitable and whole student belonging matter to the forefront. Thank you for your time and consideration of this request. The EDI Subcommittee of the Citywide PTO is represented by Heather Macduffus and Grace Young-Jay, and also supported by about 15 other parents also supported the letter. And the last letter tonight is a letter from a student from, hi, my name is Isabella Loz de Silveira, and I am a fifth-grade student at Southwest Middle School. I'm sharing a petition to make Lunar New Year a holiday in Quincy schools because I think people who celebrate this holiday should have time with their family and be happy. 103 Southwest students, teachers, and families signed this petition. I have a copy of the petition if anyone wants to see it, and that's the end of what was submitted.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Good evening again, everyone. I hope everyone is doing well. First item on the superintendent's agenda report is a review of the QNQ Jazzman and Essential Ellington Program. And we have with us tonight our band director, Matthew Kavanaugh, who will present, and I believe Michael DiMarco is here as well. But anyway, Matthew will be presenting on this piece of the agenda tonight. And thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. So again, thank you for having me today, and I'm looking to talk about the QNQ Jazzman today, as well as the Essential Ellington Program, and give this PowerPoint to hopefully educate on what exactly these organizations and opportunities are that are going to be presented in our school system in the next couple of weeks. So essentially, so it's called the Essential Ellington Program, and I've put up some essential questions here, and they are, who is Marcus Printup? What is the Essential Ellington Program? What is the Jazz at Lincoln Center Orchestra? Why is the Essential Ellington Competition and the Jazz at Lincoln Center important to students and to us? And then I want to talk a little bit about the continued growth of the QNQ Jazz Ensemble, if I could as well. So I'm not going to read everything on here, but essentially, Marcus Printup is an incredible trumpet player and an incredible jazz educator. And, you know, his, there's incredible details up on the PowerPoint about his accomplishments and his work with students and with the Jazz at Lincoln Center Orchestra, which he has been involved with in the mid-'90s. So we're very lucky to have an opportunity bestowed on us where he is going to actually come and work with our Jazz Ensemble. And he is from, let's see, he's from the Essential Ellington Competition. Essentially, what that is, I feel like I'm saying essentially a lot tonight. What that program is, it's based out of New York Lincoln Center, and it's an educational program and a competition that's been created for high school jazz ensembles. Every year, they accept 15 jazz ensembles into this competition, and they've been doing it since the '90s. This year is a list of the 15 groups that are accepted into the Essential Ellington Competition. And one of the groups that was accepted this year, and it's their second time ever being accepted into the competition, was King Philip High School. And I feature Mr. Keo up there, who's the King Philip High School Band Director, because he is responsible for this opportunity that we're going to be able to have with our students. And I listed down, just to give you some perspective, on the bottom there listed some of the other schools that have been accepted in from Massachusetts into the Essential Ellington Competition. You'll see Wellesley up there, Lexington, Foxborough, King Philip, and Newton South as well. So what is the Jazz at Lincoln Center Orchestra? It is a premier jazz ensemble, big band jazz ensemble, and I would say one of the most premier in the world. It's run by Witten Marsalis, who's their music director and artistic director. And, you know, I created some, you know, I put up some historical photos there of the group in Berlin, and they have this Jazz at Lincoln Center outreach program. The Essential Ellington Competition is only one piece of it. There's a ton of online resources for band directors. I'm a member of their website, it's a free membership for band directors. So with that membership, I am allowed to have free access to music every year to use with my students, which is a huge, huge tool. I mean, music can be expensive, and it's great to have that resource. They do band director workshops, they go out and do school performances, and they do, you know, recordings, and they give access through their jazz.org for students. So it's more than just a competition. They're trying to build jazz education through their platform of being one of the premier jazz, big band ensembles in the world. So before I get to this slide, I don't know if there's any questions about anything? No? So we've been very fortunate in the music program here that the Jazz Ensemble has grown tremendously in the last five years. Over the last three years, we've gotten two silver, three silver medals, two last year, the one the year before. This year, we went to two district competitions, one in the southeast at Oliver Ames and one in the northeast at Reading. And for the first time ever at the Reading competition, we were, had a high enough ranking silver to be given an opportunity to go to the MAJA state finals. At the MAJA state finals, we were really happy to be there for the first time, and the students showed so much improvement from their first competition till state finals that we received a gold medal at the MAJA state finals, which is, you know, our first time being there, but also our first time getting a gold medal as well. The students worked incredibly hard, they did a ton of listening and learning of this, you know, American jazz style of music, and I'm really proud of what they've done and this opportunity that's going to be presented in front of them, which comes in the next slide here, which is an invitation to you, I was going to say essentially again, which is an invitation to you. Because of Mike Keo, who is a former QPS employee, a former Quincy Public Schools Band Director, has seen the growth in our jazz program, he told me personally that he felt like our students were deserving of this amazing opportunity. So when you get into the Essential Ellington Competition, a month ahead of time, they send out a member of the band, Marcus Printup being that member of the band, to come and work with your ensemble. So on April 1st, he's going to be coming to work with the King Philip High School Jazz Ensemble, and receiving that clinic with that jazz educator, he's allowed to nominate another school district and another band to also receive a clinic that morning. And with his ties to Quincy and the growth that he's seen in our jazz ensemble, he decided that he wanted to give that opportunity to us, which is a great honor to have been given that opportunity, but also to have, you know, a jazz educator and a member of the Jazz at Lincoln Center Orchestra come work with our students. And these are, these are members of an orchestra that our students are listening to recordings of. They know the names of these members of this premier jazz ensemble. So he's going to be coming on April 1st. So he's going to be coming on April first from nine to ten thirty, North Quincy High School in the auditorium. And he's going to come work with the Jazz Ensemble. And I'd really like to extend an invitation to you to come and watch. And I know I'll be excited to learn that day from what he has to offer. And I hope the presentation today helped broker some of the different organizations and what they do so that you have a better understanding of what the opportunity is and who's coming to work with us. So we're very lucky for this opportunity, and I'm very excited for it, so.
No question, just a comment. First of all, thank you to Mr. Keo and thank you to all of our music educators. The change in that program in the past ten years or so has been phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. So my thanks to all of our music educators and certainly to Mr. Keo. This sounds like an incredible opportunity, so I really appreciate you working with it.
And if I may, I just have to thank my department head, our system-wide music department chair, Michael DiMarco's here. And I got to say, you know, thank you for your comments. I immediately think of Mike when you talk about us in that way because he's given us tremendous leadership and me mentorship in the last ten years. So a big thank you to him, as well as all of your support and Mrs. Perkins' support. And Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mulvey, so.
Yeah, I've seen Matt in action, particularly with the marching band. And he works incredibly hard. He gets the most out of his kids. And just the arts in Quincy are so important, you know. And you've done a great job with the music, Mr. DiMarco as well. So we're really proud of you and just keep up the great work.
Thank you.
And you may need a raise.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, gentlemen, and all the folks involved in the music program. The marching band is the most visible to me. Although when I get into the music Christmas festival at Quincy High School, we see the kids of all ages, as well as the staff, jumping in and doing an incredible job. But there were years, quite frankly, I'd be on the reviewing stand and cringe seeing the kids coming down the street because it, and it's the complete opposite today. They are the pride of the city. I know they go to a lot of competitions. They go to other places. It's a great reflection on the city, and it's due to the work of you gentlemen. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. I watch from afar, and, you know, we're second to none. I think, I think the arts, the music department, the band, the, you know, everything that we're doing, and to the mayor's point, makes us really proud. And you don't really realize it until you see when you're getting accolades like this from other communities, when you're out there competing. We go into the auditorium and we get to hear the kids playing music. And it's incredible to see them get up there and really master some of the, you know, the musicians and the instruments that they're playing. So thank you for your work. Thank you for your work, and we're really proud of the work that you're doing. Thank you.
I obviously want to echo everyone's comments. Mr. DiMarco, Mr. Kavanaugh have really worked to transform the program. I do have to thank Assistant Superintendent Erin Perkins, who works very closely with both of you. And of course, thank the mayor and the school committee for the support of helping us overhaul the band program and allowing great events like this to come into the city. So it's super exciting. We appreciate your work, and we know you'll do great work continuing with our kids. So thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Enjoy your night. Next on the agenda is the Quincy High School History Bowl Team. The History Bowl Team recently competed in the New England Championships with the JV team finishing in second place in qualifying for the National History Bowl Championship. Congratulations to Grade Ten students Ramona Benzel, Conrad Brown, and Eddie Giza. Eddie Giza also earned individual honors by winning the JV History B for the second year in a row and qualifying for the National History B Championship. Both championship events are held the same week in April in Washington, DC. So congratulations to this team and best of luck to Eddie Giza in the next round of competition. Next is recent upcoming in Quincy Public Schools events. Of course, spring drama productions continue with the Second Weekend of Beauty and the Beast, a joint production of the North Quincy and Quincy High School Drama Clubs. The next times for this show are Friday, March twenty-second at seven thirty PM, and Saturday, March twenty-third at two PM and seven thirty PM. I have the privilege of attending last Saturday's two PM show, and I have to say it was an amazing performance. And students are extremely, extremely impressive. So if you can make these next showings, you would really, really enjoy it. And again, congratulations to our teams at Quincy High, North Quincy High, and our students who did a fantastic performance. And I'm sure the fantastic performances will continue this weekend as well. Next, the annual Bob McKilloguddy Memorial Middle School Citywide Swim Meet is this Saturday, March twenty-third at nine AM at the Lincoln Hancock Pool. Again, that's this Saturday, March twenty-third at nine AM at the Lincoln Hancock Pool. Next, the North Quincy High School Quiz Show Team makes their season debut Saturday, March twenty-third at six PM versus Lexington High School. This is an annual exciting event, and I know our teams will do great, and I wish them the best of luck. The Credit for Life Fair will be next Thursday, March twenty-eighth, beginning at nine AM at the Terral Room. Thanks to our Quincy School Community Business Partners for putting together this important annual event for two hundred high school students. We have an upcoming Parent Academy events, a few events actually, showcasing illustrative mathematics for elementary school parents and guardians on Tuesday, April second, and the Special Education Department presentation of the new IEP format on Thursday, April fourth, both at six PM. And lastly, our upcoming arts events include the Atlantic Middle Schools' presentation of Moana Friday, April fifth at seven PM and Saturday, April sixth at two PM and seven PM. And the Combined High School Choir's Spring Concert on Tuesday, April ninth, and the Combined High School Concert Band on Thursday, April eleventh, both at seven PM. With that, that ends my superintendent's report.
I would ask for a motion to take the agenda out of order so that we can move the old business to after new business to allow. Motion by Mrs. Hubley, second by Mrs. Lebo. Do we need a roll call?
I think it's all in favor.
All in favor? All in favor? Yeah, yeah, Mrs. Lebo seconded. Oh, you want to, yes, yes, go ahead.
Just for people watching at home, Mr. Gutter is the chair of the, sorry. Should have waited, jumped the gun. Just for everyone watching at home, the reason we're taking it out of order, Mr. Gutter is the chair of the Policy Committee, and he's just going to be joining us a little late, so we want him to be here for that discussion, so thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Old business to after new. So new business, artificial intelligence presentation, Mr. Marani?
So I just want to start off with introducing our resident AI expert, Mr. Marani, who, at the beginning of the school year, when, you know, he first started, I said, okay, that's it. You know, we got to get on board with this AI thing. You're going to make that your mission. He ran with that, and he now, I mean, the things that he could tell you about AI and how AI was created and how input and output and all kinds of things work is pretty impressive and amazing. He's been to a ton of professional development himself. And I really think he has done a phenomenal job digging into this so that our district is prepared as this becomes a bigger and bigger benefit, but also concern. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Marani.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. So first off, I just want to thank everybody here because this is one of those topics where it's very important, but depending on perception, it may or may not be urgent. And so it's important that we, as a team, work together to prioritize this in a very evolving subject that is artificial intelligence. So there's no great expert out there, that's what my research has brought me to, that can tell us exactly how it's going to impact education. However, we still need to develop a plan so that we're prepared for whatever is thrown our way within artificial intelligence. So I'll start with that, and then I just want to offer an anecdote. So November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, a very small, unknown company called OpenAI released ChatGPT. So that was November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Five days later, they had a million registered users. So in just five days of releasing ChatGPT, they had a million registered users actively using that platform. And I start this presentation with that anecdote because I think it indicates the potential impact this technology can have, not just on education, but throughout, but certainly for our purposes throughout education. And therefore, it emphasizes the importance of putting together a plan. As we look at this agenda here, you know, I want to start this presentation by going over just the basics of what AI is. I think Ms. Perkins gave me a little bit too much credit on that, so I certainly am still learning throughout this process. However, throughout all of the different seminars that I've attended, and that's an AI Symposium at Boston University, a summit at Pennley University, and also at Mass-Q, there's a lot of information out there. So I'm going to make it my goal to explain the general basics of what it is so that we know what we're talking about as we talk about our plan moving forward. The remaining piece of this, of this presentation beyond discussing AI, what it is, how it's used, but also talking about the team that we've put together here in Quincy and our action steps and our goals and our mission, not just this year, but moving forward. So that is something that is presently happening. That I'll share a little bit more with you momentarily. So first, we'll start with just a general understanding of artificial intelligence. So the definition, in a very simple way, is that the intelligence of a machine or a computer that enables that computer to imitate or mimic human capabilities. I emphasize the word mimic because a lot of people who use it think it has those capabilities, but it mimics those capabilities. There's key components to AI, machine learning and deep learning. Deep learning is a subset of machine learning. There's also a neural network, cognitive computing, computer vision, and natural language processing. These could take hours just to go into each one, but those are the core components that fall within the umbrella that is artificial intelligence. I bring that up because AI, artificial intelligence, has existed for quite some time now. But back to that anecdote I started with, it was really the mass exposure to generative AI. So if we look at the next slide, generative AI is really the piece that triggered the urgency a little bit more in what, in the potential impact this might have on all of us. So the definition, it refers to those deep learning models, which are just computer files that data scientists have trained to perform tasks. And they do this by using an algorithm. And this can generate high-quality text images and other content based on the data that they're trained on. And so if you look at that image there, essentially, again, I use ChatGPT. I'll reference that quite a bit, but that is not the only platform. There's many other platforms that offer generative AI abilities. But ChatGPT is the most common, or I should say, most well-known. But essentially, what can happen is with generative AI, it's whenever there's a human starting offering input, it then gets placed into the platform. So we might type it in, and I will provide a demo momentarily, so you'll be able to see it if you haven't seen it yet. But essentially, it goes into the platform, it accesses a large language model, and then based on a series of algorithms connected through a neural network, it then generates output. And so that output makes it look like it knows what we're saying. It's still binary code based on algorithms that's taking our words, predicting patterns, and generating what it thinks we want to see next. So that's the process. That's kind of the under-the-hood look at what's happening. So I say that briefly. Again, this, just this slide alone, we could go into it for hours. We won't. Certainly, I'll answer any questions that we have later at the end of the presentation that you might have on that. But I also want to talk about the usage. So we need to really understand the scale of the impact here. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, five days, a million, a million users within ChatGPT. Now that slide, excuse me, that image on the left offers different well-known companies, and it shows you their growth. So just a couple examples. Netflix took over twelve hundred days to get to a million users. Facebook took over five, excuse me, just under five hundred days to get to that million users. So it shows you, when you look at kind of the comparison of the growth, it is significant. The only one that has grown faster is the meta-platform Threads. And if you look at the data on Threads, that was like a pretty significant surge of users that then kind of dropped off. So at this point, there's still more active users within ChatGPT despite the sudden growth within Threads. And then the image on the right side of that slide shows you the amount of months it took each platform to get to a hundred million global, that's monthly active users. So that's people who are using it on a regular basis, a hundred million. And it took ChatGPT two months to get to that figure. And if you look at all of those, the closest, the second place closest was TikTok, and that took them nine months to get to a hundred million monthly active users. So again, I say this just to emphasize, you know, the scale of things. I think we all know the scale, but when you actually look at the numbers, it's really alarming, exciting, depending on how you look at it, but it's significant one way or another. Currently, there's a typo there. It should say one point six billion. I repeat, one point six billion monthly visits currently on ChatGPT. So that's different than the monthly active users because those are repeat visits. But every time somebody goes to ChatGPT, that's considered a visit. That's happening on average one point six billion times per month. So next up, I'll just show you a demo of this software.
Write me a silly short story that is appropriate and humorous for students in grade six that incorporates different types of real-world rate and ratio problems that the character needs to solve in order to be successful. Please also make sure that each problem that is solved is explained so that the grade-six reader can understand how the problem was solved. Click this arrow, and it immediately starts generating a story for me. While it's generating the story, I just want to point out that it is definitely imperative for anybody who might be using this software or any AI-based software to review the content that is generated. That's obviously very, very important, especially if it's going to be viewed by students. So for the purposes of this video, we'll say that this paragraph, or I'm sorry, this story here has been reviewed. And let's say that on top of this actual story, I want to be able to add some follow-up questions that could possibly guide a discussion with the class. So I can take another prompt. Again, I've written these in advance just for the sake of time, but it says, come up with five open-ended questions related to this story that will prompt grade-six students to think about the math that the main character needed to be successful. As I hit that, scroll down, it instantly starts generating content for me. Critical thinking question, problem-solving inquiry, so on and so forth. So these can be items that I could print this out, have each student read it. And there is a way to export this, or I can simply copy-paste this into a Word document, share it with each student, do some sort of whole-group read aloud, and then possibly a follow-up here, again, in whole group or in small groups. That would be up to the teacher. But all we need to do now is copy this. We're going to go to a website called Diffit, right? So this is a free website for teachers, okay? And at this point now, all I have to do is click on this button up here, Video URL. I'm going to paste the YouTube clip there, all right? And I'm going to generate resources. So it's going to take a moment to load. And I want to point out that, again, all of this content that is now generated needs to be carefully reviewed. But what's nice about this is I have quite a bit here. I have a summary here of the main important. I have a summary here of the main points. I also have a transcript of the video, so I can see the text from the video. So now this is another way for students to process the information. So again, they could watch this video. They then have information here related to that video. Now, let's say as I go through it and I review it, let's say I see some terms here that I like and maybe don't like. Okay, so I can go up here and I can edit. So let's say I want to get rid of original. So I want that, but let's also say I want to add rates and unit rates. And let's see, it's not there, so we'll add proportions. Generate, and in just a few seconds, it will add those terms on there. So these are key vocabulary words that I would want my students to know. It also gives me multiple choice questions here, short-answer questions, and open-ended prompts. So it gives me all of this content here that I can copy-paste and put it into a doc as I deem appropriate. But there's also another layer to this that's worth looking at. So get student activities. Now, here, there's all sorts of templates that are pre-populated that will take the content from what I just showed you and input it into these templates. So personally, I like the vocabulary drag-and-drop. And it allows me to now create this slides file. Again, this is all based on the content from that video. So all I did was copy-paste the video into the opening prompt. This platform is called Diffit, as I mentioned. And now I want to point out, I could share this to Google Classroom, so it integrates with Google Classroom. However, I'm going to open with Google Slides. This is now a teacher page that I can look at just to kind of help me with my lesson flow here. But it will literally give me additional input as I go through here. So the vocabulary words that we looked at before, I can have students drag and match those to where they belong. And as I explore this more, right, there's all of that content from the video. We can have students read, take notes on the side, and they can keep going through. So it's all the content from that video that they can now add their own notes. And eventually, we can get to the multiple-choice questions, right? Again, I can modify these as much or as little as I would like, right? We have the open-ended, so a student can interact with this. So I could take this slide, the slide deck, rather, put it in directly into Google Classroom, giving every student access to this particular activity.
Okay, so first off, thank you for your patience. I felt a little bit longer as I was watching it compared to, you know, when I was making it. But I just wanted to offer those examples. One, most people at this point have seen ChatGPT. A lot of people don't know about Diffit, but it's this very helpful tool. And I think, you know, the important point of showing that is, one, to see how it works, but then also, two, to, it explains a little bit of the reality behind it and why so many people are drawn to it. Once you try it, you start to see what it can offer. And therefore, you know, I hope this then helps us kind of change our lens as we look at the QPS staff usage so far. So obviously, I went over kind of the the overall usage. But we also surveyed our QPS staff members at the middle school and high school level just to get a sense of what their experience is thus far with artificial intelligence. So just very briefly, you know, when they, when we asked about the frequency of use for generative AI, forty-five point nine percent said that they had never used it at the time of the survey. So a little less than half of our QPS staff members who responded to the survey, which was approximately a little over a hundred, said that they had never used it. But you'll notice that the majority uses it to some degree. So fifty-four point one percent, if you look at, if you combine the monthly, the weekly, daily, and sporadically. And so that's just important for us to know as we start to think about what professional development opportunities make sense and also what sort of guidance makes sense for them. Just a few more data points regarding the survey. When asked to rank their comfort level using AI, this is very important despite the fact that more than half of the staff that responded have used it. The majority, sixty point eight percent, are either uncomfortable or very uncomfortable. In other words, they don't feel equipped to use it to really benefit them as an educator. And certainly, I would say guidance in terms of any sort of student use is definitely needed at this time. So that's just an important thing to point out. And then just very quickly, as I've said, ChatGPT, by far, the most popular platform with fifty-eight point one percent of our QPS staff members using that versus Google Bard and Microsoft Bing AI. So we also asked educators if it had impacted their experience as an educator. So whether they use it or not, we wanted to see how it might have impacted the year thus far. Fifty-nine point one percent said neutral to positive. So again, that could mean not great or not significant. There's some impact, but definitely neutral to positive. Said, excuse me, fifty, fifty-nine point one said neutral to positive, while twenty-five percent did say negative. So that's very important as we look at, for the small percentage of people who said yes, it has significantly impacted, which is only seventeen point six percent. There's still a decent portion of people that are saying, okay, there are some negative results that we have to look at. So not that it's all negative, but it's certainly a call for us to say, okay, we've got to dig deeper, and we've got to figure out how to equip these teachers so that they can address that negative impact that they're experiencing. And then that shifts us over to our challenges that we're seeing. So I just want to point out, I, in the next two slides, including this slide, you'll see bolded and underlined statements. That's because those terms came up in the survey as challenges that educators are seeing. So when we look at some of the challenges within artificial intelligence, the first one that should be stated right away is it can provide incorrect or inaccurate answers. So that's very important to point out, that it is not always accurate. And it's important that both our teachers and our students know that. It can pull from inaccurate or misinterpreted data, and it can also have what's called hallucinations. So this is actually a term, an AI-based term, where essentially it's, for some reason systematically, it's misprocessing the information, and it's generating not just incorrect information, but actually factually incorrect. So an example of this is it might take two authors and combine their names and come up with a citation that's completely never existed, and it will look very professional. So that can be very misleading, particularly for students. I think, you know, most educators will look at that and go, no, I'm pretty sure, you know, Ernest, Ernest's last name is Hemingway, not something else, right? And so we just have to be aware of that, that there are outright facts that look accurate that are completely false. And so that's important to note. It's also known to generate discriminatory or biased results. It can do this. I will say, as I've been observing it over the last few months, they seem to be getting better at making the adjustments to avoid that. However, you may or may not have heard in the news recently with Google Gemini, which is a new platform that they recently came out with. They were starting to produce historically inaccurate images as a way to compensate for some of these potential discriminatory results. So as a way to compensate for it, it started producing historical images that weren't historically accurate. It makes plagiarism and cheating on assessments easier. So that's certainly, and I, and again, I underline and bolded plagiarism because amidst the commentary from the survey responses, that was definitely listed multiple times as a concern, so certainly something we have to look at. It also puts the credibility of homework in question, and it does create privacy issues, so that's very important. So for example, ChatGPT, if a student were to type information in there, where does that information go? Does OpenAI now have access to that information? So these are questions we have to ask ourselves whenever there's a platform that may or may not be used by our students. Definitely in schools, but also we have to work to make families aware of the potential repercussions of what they might be typing about themselves or about their work into one of these platforms. So despite some of those concerns, there's also a lot of great opportunities as well. And so I think it's important to look at this, much like we would the internet, right? There's great things that come from the internet, and there's certainly negative things that come from the internet. And this is, I would say, is very, very similar in that manner. It can be used to help a student outline or organize their writing, and it's also a great place to start to help a student who might be struggling to generate ideas. There's also potential to serve as homework support. I don't have a demo for this, but I would highly recommend, if you are interested in the subject and you want to explore, download the Pi app, P-I. Download that app, very fun to play with. It's as if you can have a verbal conversation with another human. It's obviously not, but it's very interactive in that way. And I've practiced it as if I was a student looking for help with homework, and it does a pretty good job. I'm not suggesting we adopt it at this time, but these are platforms that are at least worth being aware of and exploring and seeing what it can do. Lesson plan creation, as I showed you in the demo, absolutely. It also can help a teacher supplement instructional materials pretty easily, as you saw in the demo. And it has potential to create comments and instant feedback for formative assessments. So this is something where students might have access to feedback much quicker than waiting on a teacher doing it. That being said, it certainly wouldn't replace the teacher feedback, but it's another potential add-on to it. And it will allow teachers to more easily differentiate their instruction. So that's, that's important to consider. So to help us prepare this district for artificial intelligence and the impact it might have in the future, we put together a team to just start planning. So there's seven teachers on that team. Right now, we started with high school educators. We do plan on opening that up beyond that, but we started at the high school levels. Seven teachers, two building administrators, Mr. Cavalo from the IT department, and myself. Our mission is pretty straightforward. The first steps towards achievement of this are focused on making sure that we can minimize the challenges but leverage the strengths so that we can enhance both the teaching and the learning experience for our students. So our first goal is based on guidance and policy research. So the goal is to develop and draft guidance, and I put and/or policy language because there's still so much to learn that it most likely makes sense to start with guidance. That's kind of where we've landed as a team. That's kind of what we're seeing. But I will provide some examples of some language from other districts. But our action steps to achieve this are to identify the priorities, to address this within the language, to research existing policies, and then to actually draft and share that language with district leadership. And I will show you a timeline towards the end of this presentation, just to show you when we hope to do that. Just the goal status, so far, the identified priorities to address, defining artificial intelligence, offering guidance, but specifically targeting who's reading that guidance. So making sure we have guidance for students, for educators, and for families. I think that's very important. Making sure that we are aware of how to guide teachers and students regarding academic integrity and understanding the challenges, and also research existing policies, language, and guidance language, particularly among Boston, Newton, and Westwood. And quite honestly, as I've been attending these seminars and summits on this subject, there's many districts that don't have this language, so there wasn't a huge database to look at. What you see here is Boston and their language that is available on their website at this time. So again, our goal is to look at this and look at what we like about it, what we don't like about it, as a way to help guide us as we develop what Quincy Public Schools should utilize. So we really appreciated the fact that there were guiding principles. And I also just want to point out, on the right, I know it's hard to see, but they break down guidance to specific groups. Their groups are based on learners, teachers, and employees. So as a team, we don't necessarily agree with that group targeting. As I said, students, families, and educators is more our target groups. But at the same time, the way they formatted that, breaking it down, sounds like it's a good idea. Additionally, if we look at Westwood on the next slide, excuse me, Newton. So they, what they did differently with Boston is they put the definitions right on there. So again, it's very important to identify what we're talking about when we say artificial intelligence because it is such a broad topic. So you'll see that they use more of a narrative format, not a table format, but they did identify both staff and both students in their guidance, and so they did break it down that way. One thing not included in this is they do have a link to additional guidance that allows viewers or people seeing that webpage to learn about new resources. So that, what's nice is you can kind of upload with the evolution of this technology, you can make sure that that's up to date as a resource for all stakeholders. And then finally, if we shift gears to Westwood, very, very similar to Newton. One thing that they did that I do want to point out is that they emphasized ChatGPT. I do think it's okay to bring up ChatGPT, but we as an AI-planning team, what we don't want to do is create any sort of language that could present us encouraging ChatGPT rather than guiding on how to use whatever platform they may be using. So it's important to acknowledge it because, again, so many people are using it, but they did that right upfront. So for us, we look at that and say, we don't necessarily agree with where that's placed. So we give, I give you those three examples just to kind of indicate how we as a team are processing this information with the goal of drafting our own version of this and proposing it to district leadership. Our next focus is professional development. So obviously, as we said, over sixty percent of the educator survey do not feel comfortable with artificial intelligence. And so for us to be prepared to help our students as effectively as possible, we have to make sure people feel comfortable getting to know this new technology. So our action steps are to identify the initial needs of teachers. Part of that was done through the survey. Research and identify professional development resources and opportunities. And then also plan and secure professional development with a target of November fifth. That is our next professional day of learning. So we really hope to have a broad menu of offerings that meet the varying needs of different educators throughout Quincy. The goal status of our second goal, the initial needs for educators, as of now, we're looking at as understanding AI basics, knowing the pros and cons. Also, instruction on use for educators, providing guidance to educators regarding use for students. So a lot, a lot of people don't know that ChatGPT has a policy that says children under thirteen should not use this. And so right off the bat, you know, we don't want to in any way encourage our students to use it when the policy itself by ChatGPT is saying nobody under thirteen. And there's actually a bill currently, not, not, not law yet, but that might prevent all students throughout the nation, thirteen or under, not able to use, to use this software. So that's important. And then, of course, just research and identify PD options. There's not a huge database of people that can provide this, but as I've been able to attend many of those conferences, the network of providers has grown. And so I'm very, very excited because I do think we're going to have a pretty broad menu on the, on the fifth of next school year. And finally, if we could just go to the timeline. So I do just want to point out that this starts this previous December because that's when we, that's when we had our first team meeting. I do just want to note that we did have AIPD in our November seventh professional day of learning. The feedback on that was immensely positive. It was both sessions filled up very, very quickly. So that alone tells us this is something QPS educators are interested in learning more about. That was run by Naomi Caselli. She is a professor at Boston University. She'll be helping us for November fifth of next year, so she's already committed on that. And she's actually going to help us offer a middle-school PD this April as just kind of an added bonus that we have her available there. Again, our goal is November fifth, but we do have her helping us on April tenth for the middle-school system-wide PD. And finally, I just want to point out that May is our goal timeline of when we hope to have firmed-up guidance and policy language to submit as proposed language to include as guidance and potential policy down the road for QPS. So with that, I open it up to any questions, any comments that you might have, and I thank you for your time and attention to this important issue. Uh, and I thank you for your time and attention to this important issue.
I'm gonna ask AI Chat G P T to give me some questions. Hold on a second. Anyone? Mrs. Lebo.
Thank you so much for this. I know I brought this to the school committee's attention because, because of my concerns uh and confusion around it. And uh, I can't believe the amount of work that's been done on it already. So I thank you, Mr. Marani and, and Erin for that. I have one question. I know Chat G P T is free. Are all the platforms free?
Well, uh, what you're seeing is a lot of them offer free versions. And then there's premium version. So even Chat G P T, right now, the free version is three point five. You can pay for the Chat G P T four. Uh, so most platforms have a free version and a, a premium paid for version.
And um, I, I, once again, I want to say, I think this is still true. The P, the P D I took, they said, chat, not AI will never say, I don't know. Is that true, Ms. Marani?
I have not, I have not encountered it saying, I don't know. What I will say with the Pi app, I'm sorry to cut you off. It will say, uh, I'm not able to discuss that. So it will say, cause there's certain parameters on that, but I haven't seen it say, oh, I'm not sure. Sorry, can't help you.
I think even if you ask a junk question, it will come up with an answer.
It will generate something.
So that's really, that's one of the things that I think people really need to know.
It's a good point.
And also that two people asking the exact same question are going to get two different answers.
Yep. Yep.
This is great though. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, while I'm still processing all this and um, it's just so different and um, and new for me. Not really necessarily for the students. I know that the staff has been asking for guidance on this, so I'm really glad that we're looking into it and exploring it. Despite um, I feel like I don't fully understand all of it, the ramifications. But um, I'm, I'm glad you're looking into it as a team. And um, will we, do you foresee us getting to the point that we're going to be? I don't want to require, might feel too strong, but requiring us to, to be asking educators to use these or um. Or encouraging them in any way, or is this really just if you're going to use it, this is some things to remember? Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, I, I would say it's hard to predict any sort of requirement. I would say what you're seeing more is platforms are just embedding it. And so making sure that teachers are equipped. So it's, so right now Chat G P T is a, it's an AI-based platform. Uh, but there's a lot of platforms we use um day-to-day digital, you know, with our illustrative mathematics. There's a digital component to that. You're gonna start to see a lot of these publishers embed AI technology within those platforms. So not necessarily a requirement, but more, it'll just exist in more places. And therefore, we want to make sure people feel equipped to handle that.
Right, right. I, I would just, you know, for the, the people, the staff that answered. And you had said, it was a hundred staff members that responded.
A little over a hundred that responded.
Yeah, so I, and I'm feeling like the ones that didn't respond may also feel very uncomfortable with it. So just having so many staff that don't feel comfortable with it yet. Asking them to, you know, learn about it and use it if they ha- you know, as a requirement. Would be really difficult for me to kind of be okay with. But if, if there are some, you know, staff that feel that this is going to be, you know, beneficial to them. Then, then definitely having the tools and the support to understand how to use it correctly. The students, I feel like it's um, I want to read those uh examples from, from Boston and Newton on, on the student. Guidelines. Um, but definitely I think those need to be looked at really carefully. And is there anything out there that can help teachers understand or differentiate? In a student's work if that's been used? Is there anything at all about that?
There's a lot of platforms out there. I would say that, that will help exactly with that. The challenge is assessing um how effective they are in doing that. And that's where this subject is so, there's so much nuance to it. Because, you know, for every concern that's out there, there's a platform to address that concern. But we can't rely on any of these things fully, right? So at the end of the day, it's just going to take human judgment to figure out how to handle that. But there are platforms that help with that. The efficacy of those platforms varies. I would describe all the different AI-based platforms right now as just a fire hose of platforms that are coming at everybody. And knowing, you know, what to ignore and what to look at closer. That in and of itself uh requires guidance and professional development.
Okay, thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. This is a great presentation. Thank you so much for all the work on this. I recently went to a conference on AI and um, it was very interesting. But I was talking to, well, one of the things the presenter did put in his presentation was talking about how. Back in the day when calculators first came out, how people thought, you know, students are just cheating, you know? And now in this day and age, we're using them as a tool. And as I'm talking to school committee people across the county. And um, that they are starting to um, look at AI as a tool. And how they can help their students uh with understanding it as well as their teachers and how to actually use it as a tool. I believe it was um, last person I was talking to was from Silver Lake Regional. And um, I believe he was one, he was one of the ones that was saying they're, they're looking into do, into doing just that. So uh, so yeah, so this is great. So thank you so much for, for all this. I truly appreciate it. Um, is this something we should be bringing to our policy subcommittee now? Or you want us to hold off and bring it a little later?
Well, I'd respectfully request that we put together a document and propose it to district leadership. And maybe from there, that decision could be, you know, proposed to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Two quick questions. Um, first one you might have mentioned before I walked in. Which is um, and I, since I've been in, I didn't hear you say it. But where is the state on all of this in terms of any guidelines for anything?
Uh, actually from the state, I have not um, was, I haven't encountered anything. There is a um, a federal document in terms of AI in education. It's pretty, pretty in-depth. Quite honestly, there's, there's nothing in there um, that I would say stands out as actionable at this time. But no, I haven't seen anything directly from the Commonwealth.
And uh, second question. First, thank you for your leadership on this. Appreciate that very much. Yeah, I, I kind of view this much like D E I where we're going to get to the point where every school district is competing for. Uh, you know, we, we were all competing for D E I person, you know, everybody, every organization, everybody. We're going to get to the point where we're going to need an AI coordinator. And my question to you is, do you envision that? And if so, uh, at, at what budget time would that be something that we would think about?
Quite honestly, um, th- there's so much, you know, kind of guessing of what might be. It's, it's hard to say. I don't know if having an AI position exclusively for AI. I'm basing this on what I've seen so far, would make sense. And the only reason why I say that is it's kind of like saying, because we use electricity to power everything. We need electricians to help us teach in classrooms with lights on. In other words, it's going to be everywhere. And so there's one anecdote that uh you'll hear a lot. And, and this isn't a statement on what the impact this is going to have on jobs. But there's one statement that says, it's not that AI will take jobs. It's that people comfortable with AI will get those jobs. And so I think to, to answer that question, I would say. What we really have to start thinking about is more at the, you know, undergrad and graduate level of. How do we prepare the new workforce coming in to be comfortable with AI in, in a variety of fields?
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next on our agenda, Student Opportunity Act by Mrs. Parkins.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for having me. I just um, the, as you know, the plan for the Student Opportunity Act. Is due on April first. And so this, it needs to be voted on by the school committee. And so um, we've put together a presentation for you tonight. You have before you, you have the actual plan itself. So this is what will actually, eventually we will hit submit and send to the Department of Ed. So that's an actual copy of the, of the plan. And then for the public at home, we've basically taken that for the most part and put it into a PowerPoint presentation. So the sections of the plan that we'll just review tonight are um, the plan summary. The analyzed data and selected student subgroups, the three-year targets. The engagement of families and caregivers and other stakeholders. Um, the evidence-based programs that we have selected and what the funding looks like. So in terms of the plan summary. Um, so as we mentioned in the past few presentations. We are targeting for accelerated improvement, students with disabilities. English learners, Hispanic and Latino students and African-American subgroups. And this is based on the disparity data that we shared with you, I think, a couple of meetings back. Um, and so the evidence-based programs that we will use to address these disparities. And we will again go through the data. I'll review the data with you, including the survey data that we collected. Um, and learning experiences and outcomes. So we are focusing on one point one B, which is enhanced support for S E L and mental health. And you'll see in the survey that this was, this was the number one um response by our survey participants. And so what we are proposing is that we will partner with community-based providers to provide greater access. To in-school mental health support. We already do this with Walker Therapeutics. And we'll talk a little bit about what we currently do in a future slide. And then we are also um, uh, proposing that we partner. We're actually really excited about this initiative, that we partner with Big Brother, Big Sisters. To institute, institute a mentoring program at the high school level, specifically at Quincy High School. Um, and while we'll talk a little bit more about that. These programs will provide proactive, proactive supports to at-risk students. To engage them and support them in the learning process. And in particular, uh, this district would like to use these resources to address the disparities. That we've seen in chronic absenteeism, suspension rates and dropout rates. So you'll see throughout the presentation. That we really focus on what are we targeting with the, each of these evidence-based practices? And that is because you have it in front of you, but the public does not. That those are in response to the questions that are in the plan. So the second focus, uh, evidence-based program is two point one A, which is inclusive curriculum adoption. And so we would like to adopt a new high-quality curriculum for our English learners in grades K to eight. And also work to align the new curriculum with E L teachers in grades K to twelve. This is something that actually came out of our feedback sessions. That was a point that was made repeatedly um, was that the, the nine to twelve really wanted to be involved in this process. And um, wanted to work to align. They just got new materials not that long ago. But they really felt like they needed that professional development and support and alignment work with the other grade levels. And wanted to make sure that they were represented. So um, this evidence-based program will be used to provide supports and high-quality instruction to our E L students. In English, Language Arts and Literacy. And we will also implement a comprehensive and inclusive review of high-quality instructional materials. In the area of middle school math with the goal of possible adoption and implementation during school year twenty-six, twenty-seven. And so our middle school math program, Big Ideas, i- has been in place for about ten years. Um, the contract is running out actually next year. So we wanted to start a review process um, of our math program for a couple of reasons. Number one, because our disparity data, as you know, there's definitely a concern with middle school students in math. And so for, in, for special education, but E L and all, just really all students. And so we really think that this is something that we want to focus on. And um, do some good work to provide an inclusive, high-quality instructional program. That does a really nice job of providing supports and scaffolds. Not only for um, our general education students, but also for our neurodiverse population, our students with disabilities. And our English language learners. So um, the next focus is two point one B, which is supporting curriculum implementation. And so this is providing high-quality professional development linked to the new curriculum for English language learners in grades uh K to twelve. We feel strongly as a district that you cannot, you know, just kind of give teachers program, programs. And expect that they're going to be masters of those programs without providing them supportive professional development. To make sure that we're um, implementing things well. And so this evidence-based program will be used to provide support and high-quality professional development to E, to all E L educators in the district. And in addition, we will continue to provide high-quality professional development to all educators. To provide inclusive tier-one instruction for students with disabilities and English language learners. And then um, our, our last focus is two point two B, which is high-leverage practices for students with disabilities. Again, this was a significant disparity in the disparity data. And so um, we are focused on providing high-quality professional development to general education, English learner and special education teachers. To train all staff in high-leverage instructional practices. To support and provide scaffolds for neurodiverse students within the classroom. And so as a result of the investments of this plan, what we're hoping to see, we're hoping to see decreases. In the number of suspensions of students with disabilities and African-American students. Decreases in the number of students who drop out or are chronically absent, particularly a Hispanic or Latino student subgroup. The district will also expect to see increases in the percentage of English learners. Particularly at the high school level, making progress towards proficiency targets. And increases of the percentage of English learners and students with disabilities scoring meeting or exceeding on the MCAS assessment. So just to quickly review the data, we shared this with you before. You can see the disparities and the, the focus areas and the groups in, impacted. So as we said, the focus areas are out-of-school suspensions, chronic absenteeism, dropout rate. The percentage of students meeting their, their proficiency targets on access. And the percentage of students scoring meeting or exceeding on MCAS. And so after an analysis of the data, the data suggests the following. That um, where, where we really feel like we should focus, as I mentioned, is on increased access to counseling services. And behavioral and mental health supports. Implement a new high-quality core resource for E L instruction. And as a component of a tiered system of support at the high school level, the district will institute a mentoring program. Uh, also implement um, a, provide high-quality PD. To general education teachers and E L teachers and special education teachers. And then also follow that up with providing high-quality coaching and consultation in mathematics and literacy. Because we never want to do one-shot wonders. We want to make sure we're following up and that we're providing that support. So that uh, the things that we're working on are actually being implemented i- in the classroom. And so the next slide is the disparity data. I won't go into this again. We did already share it once before. We've shared it pretty much all over the place. And so um, you know, I, I won't go through that again, but for anyone that wants to see it, it is here in the presentation. And then the survey data, we had two hundred and ninety-two people complete the survey. And you can see the breakdown um, you know, in the slide there. So we had about a hundred and forty-eight parents that completed the survey. And so just their responses, so we provided them with a Likert, Likert scale. Uh, based on the things that we had presented earlier, the different focus areas and the things that we suggested. We also provided an opportunity for open response. Um, and so you can see that in terms of strategic objective one. The, the, the largest response, people agreed or strongly agreed. With uh, the increasing access to counseling services and behavioral and mental health supports at the high school level. And for strategic objective two, based on the survey results. It was a tie really between um, providing high-quality PD to general education teachers, E L and special education teachers. And also developing or enhancing alternative programs to support access to career and technical pathways. And so in terms of three-year targets, what we are proposing, we are. Saying uh, or agreeing to use D Z's three-year target for increasing performance for the lowest-performing students subgroup. Uh, in both E L A and math. But then in addition, we are proposing that over the course of the next three years. We will meet or exceed the state targets in the following areas. Decreases in suspension rates, increases, uh, decreases in absenteeism. Decreases in the dropout rate, increases in English um, language learners meeting or exceeding their proficiency targets. And increases in English language learners and students with disabilities meeting or exceeding MCAS scores in both E L A and mathematics. And again, we've, I, we've talked with you before about this, the engagement with the families and caregivers. So we did do quite a bit of outreach um, in order to collect feedback for the plan. So we engaged with stakeholders, some of the things that we did. We met with Q P S principals and administrators. We held an in-person meeting for all Q P S educators. We held virtual parent meetings with both the special, for a joint meeting with the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And the English Language Learner Parent Advisory Council. And we held a virtual community meeting that was open to the public. We presented to you the school committee and we. and we distributed a survey to collect stakeholder feedback. And we will continue, as part of this plan, we do need to continue to engage stakeholders by regularly meeting with stakeholder groups and updating them on our progress towards narrowing disparity data. So we do, as you know, regularly share data regarding student performance at school committees and with our stakeholder groups, and we will continue this process. We will also collect input from our stakeholders and make adjustments to the work as necessary, based on the data that we collect. So now, to really kind of get into the meat of what we're suggesting that we do, and so a lot, and I want to say, this is just, this is one plan, but there's a lot that we do in the district. This is just focused on these areas. It does not mean that we're not doing other things that might not be mentioned here in this plan. So in terms of 1.1B, so the things that we are, these are things we are already currently doing, and we are suggesting that we continue doing them with the SOA plan. And so that is, continue with adjustment counselors at the two high schools and one at the middle school. We would like to continue our partnership with Walker Therapeutic to increase access to counseling services during the school day at all levels. We would like to continue the implementation of our Open Parachute program. And we would like to continue to support the multilingual student liaison located at Quincy High School. And we'll talk about the funding that's associated with this in a few minutes. So the new things that we would like to do are to increase our partnership. So we would like to, we actually have a meeting scheduled with Manette Community Health to see if they have resources, you know, that they could provide, so that we could help students access counseling services in behavioral and mental health during the school day. And we are partnering with Big Brother and Big Sister to institute a mentoring program at Quincy High School. And this would involve one additional full-time staff person, but that is actually given to us by Big Brother, Big Sister. So it's actually not something that we necessarily need to fund. There is a small cost with the program, but it is not equivalent to a full-time staff person, and we'll talk about that. And it will be provided, so one additional staff person that will be provided through this partnership, and will support students participating at the mentoring program, which is why we liked this program so much, that they are going to provide a full-time staff person that will be at Quincy High School every single day, that can really help us to reach those at-risk students. And that they will run, they'll pair the students with mentors, they'll run monthly meetings, as well as weekly check-ins with the school-based coordinator for the students. And so we think that these programs will provide proactive supports to at-risk students, to engage them and support them in the learning environment. And in particular, we think that these strategies will improve experiences and outcomes for students with disabilities, African American students, and Hispanic or Latino subgroups. This will impact students district-wide. And the metrics that we'll use to monitor the progress are the chronic absenteeism and attendance data, suspension rates, dropout rates, as well as student grades, failure rates, MCAS, and access data. So in terms of 2.1A, the things that we currently have in place, we currently, and we would like to continue, because even though we've done these things, there still is a cost associated with this. So a new, high-quality, inclusive curriculum in both ELA and math, you've heard a lot about that, in grades K to five. So the district is currently implementing Core Knowledge Language Arts and illustrative mathematics. And we would like to continue, both of those have digital options, and, you know, replacement materials, all that come with the cost. So we are suggesting that we just keep, you know, working on those things. Currently, we've been very fortunate that a lot of that funding has come through grants. But those, we will not, the GLEAM grant is done at the end of this year, so that those replacement costs will need to come out of our curriculum line. So we think that this is something that we need to, we should just keep on doing and keep on working on. And then high-quality PD, along with that implementation, and consultation to support the implementation of these programs, we'd like to continue to offer it. We've offered it this year. We've had the CKLA consultant in all of our buildings. It's been very successful, along with an illustrative math person has also been in our buildings to help the implementation. And then we, this year, our teachers, or last year, two years ago, rather, they adopted a high-quality and comprehensive core curriculum for our English language learners in grades nine to 12. And as I mentioned before, we'd like to include them in this process, based on the results of the survey data. So new to the plan, we have been working on identifying for future adoption and implementation a new, high-quality, comprehensive, and inclusive curriculum for English language learners in grades K to eight. We would like to provide high-quality professional development and consultation to enhance and support the implementation of that program. And then provide some work with our staff to align the materials across the grade levels, and refine implementation, in particular, at the high school level. And then we would like to begin the process of a comprehensive and inclusive review of high-quality instructional materials in the area of middle school math, with the goal of a possible adoption somewhere in the future in school year 26 or 27. And we'd like to engage stakeholders in this process and pilot possible materials. And as we do this, we would also review the assessment materials, the instructional materials, and include a thorough analysis of the supports included in the programs for students with disabilities and English language learners. So this evidence-based program will improve learning experiences and outcomes for our English language learners and students with disabilities by providing access to inclusive, high-quality learning materials that provide instructional supports for all learners. This would impact students district-wide. And the metrics that will be used to monitor progress are access data, MCAS data in both ELA and math, and math, MAP assessment data in ELA and math, classroom walkthroughs, and observations. And then in terms of the supporting curriculum implementation, currently, we really do a great job of providing high-quality PD and consultation in the areas of ELA and math. We'd like to continue to offer that. And then the additions to this would be, provide professional development to all educators to support inclusive access to Tier One instruction for students with disabilities and English language learners, hopefully decreasing the number of students requiring Tier Two and Tier Three supports. And in addition, we would like to support the implementation and efficacy of the new core programs. So again, our focus with this evidence-based program would be to improve the learning experiences and outcomes for English language learners and students with disabilities. It would be impacting students district-wide. And the metrics would be benchmark data from the MAP assessment in ELA and mathematics, Tier One, Two, and Three data, classroom walkthroughs, MCAS, and access data. And then I think this is the last one. Currently, we have in place, in terms of high-leverage practices for students with disabilities, we are very fortunate, we have very talented district curriculum coordinators, and we work with great consultants. And they provide lots of opportunities for high-quality professional development, coaching, and consultation. We currently have a great model at Southwest Middle School right now, where Molly Voki is working with the staff over there, and in particular, you know, focusing on providing supports and scaffolds for all learners. And so what we would like to do, that is proposed in addition to that in this plan, is to just increase the implementation of high-quality professional development, really focusing on the three groups of educators, general educators, English language learners, and special educators, to really focus on the time when all students are in the classroom. So high-leverage practices, scaffold, support, strategies, how do you accommodate, how do you modify, so that all students can be successful when they're in the general education classroom? And also provide follow-up consultation and coaching, particularly in the area of mathematics for students with disabilities. So really focusing on math, so that when students are in the mathematics classroom, that they are able to access the curriculum, and they're receiving the supports they need to be successful. And so this evidence-based program will improve learning experiences and outcomes for students with disabilities. And it will impact students district-wide. And the metrics that will be used to monitor are MAP data, MCAS data, classroom walkthroughs, Tier Two and Tier Three data, and formative and summative assessments. And so now the funding. So as you know, I know Mr. Malaney spoke a few weeks ago that, you know, Quincy is not getting much, if anything, really, in terms of funding. So it doesn't matter, we still have to submit this plan. It's a requirement. And you are required to look at funding that will be allocated to these evidence-based programs over the course of the next three years, so FY '25, '26, and '27. So most of what we are proposing is already currently in the budget or would be in the budget for the next three years. So in terms of the two adjustment counselors, that's currently in the budget. When you look at that over the course of the next three years, you can see that that's how much, you know, that would be, $547,880. The one student liaison, which is currently funded through S R III, but will be added to the QPS budget for FY '25, you see the cost, $198,837. And the Big Brother partnership, Big Sister partnership, this is new. It's $25,000 a year for the program, which really is quite a deal. And so over the course of the past, the next three years, it would be about $72,000 to fund this program. And I have to thank Maura Appeal, who actually has a grant to cover some of that. So not only are we looking at our own funding, but also some grant funding there. So that will certainly help even lower that number even more. And in terms of the high-quality instructional materials, this is what is currently in our budget, and will, like, if you add up the three years in our curriculum budget, so it is the combination of what is currently allocated in our budget for curriculum for the next three years, so $1,200. And then the next one is the high-quality professional development. So we took, for this one, because we have two evidence-based practices that involve professional development, we took our PD line, which would be about $90,000 over the next three years. It's $30,000 a year. So we took it and we split it. So we have $30,000 that we have decided to set aside for supporting curriculum implementation, which would be about $10,000 a year. This, again, this does not count grants, which we do use a lot of our grants to provide professional development. So I don't want people to think this is the only, it was only $10,000 to support new curriculum implementation, that's not the case. We do use, like, things like Title Four and Title Two to also help supplement professional development. And then the following one, the high-quality professional development for students with disabilities, we said $60,000. And again, this could change, depending on how much the cost of things, you know, are over the course of the next three years, but in general, what we're saying is that we're taking our professional development line, and we're putting it towards the SOA plan. And so this is already funding that currently exists. So I, you know, so I do want to acknowledge that in the survey, there was a lot of comments about, you know, staffing and increased staffing. We are being very thoughtful in this plan, because this is the funding that we have. And so we're trying to do things that are low-cost or continue things that we are already currently implementing. And so I went through that really fast, it's a lot of information, and it's dense. So I thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is another, it's wonderful work. It's another unfunded mandate, because supposedly this was going to come with lots of money. And it's not coming with lots of money, but we still have to do this. And it's important work. We should be doing this work. But it's an awful lot to ask when we get so little in return. And that Student Opportunity Act funding is not really helping us a whole lot at all.
Right.
And so we're doing this on the backs of our budget and our people, which is unfortunate, because it is important work, and I'm glad that you're doing it. But it's, just when I just think of all the stuff that's piled on your plate. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Echo those sentiments, this is a lot of work, and thank you. And I'm really glad, again, I said this the last time you guys were here and spoke about this, but that we're already being so proactive, that a lot of this stuff we're already kind of having in place, which is great. But definitely the reason for doing it, you know, to help those students, is key. So thank you for doing this. I just had a couple of questions. If you could just speak a little bit more about the mentoring program, the Big Brother, Big Sister program, about how, so one staff member from Big Brother, Big Sister would be at Quincy High School. How would you select the students to be mentors? And I feel like I can sense some kind of challenges with that, having a peer. It's not like a, you know, Big Brother, Big Sister, I always think older to younger.
Oh, it is, it is older to younger, yep.
Oh, okay.
So the, sorry, maybe I didn't explain it well, but the full-time staff is like the coordinator for, because what they found, so they do this model right now, I think, in Everett, Everett, Maura? I think it's in Everett. And so they currently do it. So what they found is they have the most success at improving student outcomes when they put a staff person actually in the building. So that person is not the mentor. That person oversees the pairing of the students with the mentors. So the mentors are community-based people. So it could be someone from Granite Telecommunications, or it could be, you know, someone from Arbella, or... So they'll work to find the mentors, and then they will pair, they will try to pair students up. So starting with the eighth graders, we, it's 80 students. It's for 80 kids for next year, and it's about $30 a kid. And we will look at, you know, our students who are at risk for, you know, some of the students that are in this disparity data, you know, for things like chronic absenteeism, for things like failure rates, disengagement in school, those kinds of things. And then they will connect them with a mentor. And they try to match them based on interest, things that they like, things like that. So then the coordinator is in the school, because that's like the bridge between the school and the mentors. And so what they found is that it's really successful when they have a person that the kids get to know. And so it's like they're part of the SST team. They're part of the, you know, the student response team. They are going to kids, you know, into the classrooms and, you know, help support students. And they're just really, they're visible, they're engaged, they're active, and they get to know the students and the needs. So there's all kinds of permissions that are going to be signed off on that. So this is not like something where they just come in, the person would be obviously cordoned, fingerprinted. The parents have to sign permission. You know, we have met with them multiple times to go through those permissions and things like that. But it really, we're really excited about it. We actually think that it could be a very positive program for a lot of kids.
That's great. I definitely misunderstood that. I thought we were having high school kids mentor other high school kids, and I was just wondering.
Nope, they're adults. It's the Big Brother, Big Sister program.
Yep, right.
But they're just, it's in the high school.
Got you, okay. Definitely look forward to hearing more details about that one. Question on the new curriculum for the EL for grades K to eight. How long has the current curriculum been in place?
So, say that again, for the grades K to eight?
Yeah, the one that we're getting a new curriculum for.
It's over 10 years old, it's out of print.
Okay, so definitely time to do that anyway. Even if it's a new item, it's something we needed anyway.
Yes.
Okay, and then my last question was on the funding. For the PD, you had spoke about the $30,000 and the $60,000 combining for $90,000. Is that our total PD budget, the $90,000 for three years?
That's our total PD budget.
Okay, so going back to our last presentation about AI, we talked a lot about AI PD, and I feel like we need PD on a lot of different topics, you know, ranging the gamut. So we're putting all our PD for the next three years onto these two items. Does that, how are you going to supplement with all the other PDs that are necessary in three years?
Yeah, that's a great question. Because we typically use, we have with the Title Four and the, and Title Two grants, which are pretty much like our, that's really where we pay for the majority of our PD. So Title Four, I'd have to look at the requirements, but like 20% of it has to go towards social-emotional, it's all professional development. It's not a huge amount of money, but it's enough that we're able to cover what we want to cover. And then we get other grants as well. Whenever we see a grant, we apply for one from the Department of Ed. Maura is constantly applying for grants for social-emotional, you know, supports things like that. So we have other funding that we use to cover the cost of professional development.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we're being responsive to what teachers are looking for, our staff's looking for, and not just using it all up on something, you know. Again, worthy causes, but something the state's requiring us to do, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept the plan?
Yes, motion to accept the plan by Mrs. Lebo, second by Mrs. Hubley, and we need a roll call.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
And Maia Coke?
Yes.
Thanks.
Is the grant tied to the public schools? I mean, for academic schools?
Quincy Public Schools has recently received a grant from the Boston Celtics and Boston Scientific to renovate a room at Atlantic Middle School as a fitness room. The value of the grant is $50,000 and the work is expected to be completed by April 9th.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
And Maia Coke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Quincy Community Partnership donation?
Yes, the Quincy Public Schools continues to receive donations from local businesses and individuals. Donations totaling $39,014 were received between October 1st and March 15th, 2024, and were shared with you in your packet. Could have a motion to, to accept those donations.
So move.
So, Mr. Malaney, I can see the last bunch of those are for the Credit for Life Fair, can you give us an idea of what the rest of those are?
We...
Do they teach you many grants or?
So we have, let's see, $10,000 from the Hale Family YMCA, we have $10,000 from Colonial Federal, we have 'Tis the Season receipts of $6,239, we have $5,000 from Maia Coke, we have $1,500 from Scott Novak, we have Chris, $1,500 from Christine Pacini, we have $1,000 from Boston Scientific, $750 from the Quincy Retired Teachers, and everything else is Credit for Life.
But are those, what are they going to be used for? What, I have the list, but I was wondering, what are we using that money for?
So this goes into our partnership fund, so it supports basically our Credit for Life Fair and other...
Student Leadership.
Student Leadership Summit and all of those events that we have throughout the 'Tis the Season and those events that we fund.
It would be helpful, so we talked about, we wanted to make sure we weren't accepting grants or money that had an agenda.
Yes.
So if we could just know that when we get the list, that would be fine, thank you.
These funds are basically, they go into our partnership, they don't come with an agenda, they basically fund the partnership and we set the events that they're being paid for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
And Maia Coke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, can we travel? Can we present?
Yes, the first one is North Quincy High School Air Force Junior ROTC, grade 10 and 12, to the Stellar Explorers Space Design National Challenge Finals in Denver, Colorado, April 17th to the 21st, 2024. And I missed one, the Broad Meadows Middle School, grade 8, to Canterbury Lake Park, Salem, New Hampshire, on June 13th, 2024. Next is the Quincy High School History Bowl Team to the National Championship in Washington, DC, April 25th to the 28th, 2024.
Teacher is paying $1,100 in travel expenses for himself and his students.
Yes, we're going to be working to reimburse for that.
We're going to be working what?
Working to reimburse the teacher for that travel.
Thank you.
And we did that last year as well.
Yeah.
And lastly, North Quincy High School, grade 10, to the International Science Fair, Los Angeles, California, May 11th to the 17th, 2024.
Motion to approve. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to...
We should go back to the old business.
Yeah. Go back to the old business, which would be Mr. Gattro and the school committee meeting calendar?
There were three items that we took up in policy committee, I believe two are eligible for a vote tonight and one is open for discussion. And the first, we discussed in policy subcommittee, which is the school committee meeting.
Oh, that's right. No, I said that there were three items that we talked about, two are eligible for a vote tonight, the first being the school committee meeting calendar, which we talked about in subcommittee.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
Maia Coke?
Yes.
The next is the school committee policy book, 2.4.5 Agenda Format Revision, which is essentially a consent agenda.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
And Maia Coke?
Yes.
The, the third item is the 2024-2025 calendar, which came out of policy committee unanimously on a 3-0 vote. I know that it's open for discussion tonight and eligible for a vote on April 10th.
So I just want to reiterate my concerns from the last meeting. There were, there has been lots of evidence from many of our stakeholders, our students, our families and our staff in support of having Lunar New Year off. Students last year came before this body to ask for Lunar New Year off and presented a petition with 1,200 signatures. Parents came out and spoke at a meeting last year, held signs advocating for Lunar New Year off. And the largest percentage of our parents on this survey and staff on this survey that we just currently completed support having Lunar New Year off. There is also a petition given to us today from 100-plus members of the Southwest community that support having it off. The city itself, Quarry, or Quarry worked with the city to create a Lunar New Year event at North Quincy High School a couple weeks ago, about a month and a half ago. And it was the busiest event I have ever been at in the city of Quincy, you couldn't even walk, there were so many people there. So talk about community engagement and welcoming and supporting and celebrating our community that we have here. So 620 students at North Quincy High School, which is 41% of the student body, took the day off last year, took Lunar New Year off. And, I'm sorry, but I don't think excused absences are enough because that means that a kid misses out on what's taught in the classroom. And a lot of families aren't going to be okay with that, so they're going to send their child at the risk of not being able to celebrate that with their family. And I'm not comfortable with that. So I think our role is to represent our stakeholders and make decisions that are respectful of their thoughts and how they, what they're asking of us. And other states are doing this, we're not blazing the way, we're not alone. And I don't understand what, why we wouldn't add this one day off after so much public output of, outpouring of support for this. So I, I firmly believe we should have Lunar New Year as a day off in our calendar. Thanks.
I wasn't at the subcommittee, I know there was some discussion and vote the last subcommittee, and I appreciate that work. I did look over the stats on the survey, which we actually talked about, and we had this discussion last year, going forward, about getting more input about it. And one of the things I mentioned back then was the concern, you know, when we, when we had discussions on policy and decide to vote, you know, a lot of it's head, some of it's heart, some of it's soul on some of these issues. And the head tells me, we can't give any more days off, we have a bad snow, we went to, going into June, could be into July. My heart tells me that this is a holiday we should be acknowledging officially on the school calendar. I, you know, it begs, then begs the question, what's the next one, what's the one after that? And I guess we'll have to take them one at a time. So I, I would, I would not be supporting the calendar as recommended by the subcommittee. And I would encourage my colleagues to think a little bit more about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to thank Mrs. Owens for revising the bottom part of the calendar, I think she did a very good job on that. I love the wording, I think it's great, I think it's far less confusing as it was before when it had the cancellation days on it, now it's specifically spelled out. I think that would be much better for our parents and I really like how you did that. So thank you so much for your hard work on that.
Anyone else?
I have a question through you.
Is that on?
Yes.
Through you, if I could, to the mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, one, one of the issues that we talked about, or at least I talked about last week, was students get the day off, but if you work for the city, you don't get the day off unless you take a vacation day. So the school committee in the current proposed calendar that came out of subcommittee says, we will give you an excused absence, which to me is the same as saying, you can take a day off if you have a vacation day. So is there any sense about a citywide holiday to consider it so that, you know, the, either the students are home alone, or their parent, if they're celebrating, has to take a day off from the city?
I don't, I mean, most holidays go through the state.
Holidays. Having said that, I, I would not endorse the cost of that to the public employees would be pretty dramatic because it's not, in this case, they still have to go to school 180 days. So it's, it's still in the calendar. A holiday for police and fire costs us literally hundreds of thousands of dollars because you, you don't shut down, you have to cover all these things with overtime. So I would not be in any way contemplating a holiday on the school, on the city employee side. People have to make decisions and, city employees do get ample vacation days and personal days. If I can say, are you finished? I'm sorry.
I am.
If I could just add one thing, is that it could bother me a little bit, a couple of speakers, to suggest that the city does not respect our Asian community. I get, I get, they, right, right on that line, I, I found a little offensive because I, I think when you look at the history of the city and you look at the history of immigration to this community for 150 years, we've been a welcoming community. Now, I would suggest over the last three decades, we've been far more welcoming than we used to be. And we could go into that with a lot of examples of some of the immigrant group coming here. And I think the school system, out of all departments, have done a remarkable job with the programming and the welcoming and, and all the extras that comes with it for that community. So I, I think we should be proud of that. So I don't think this is a question of respect necessarily of the community, I just think it's, at this point, with the numbers that they are, it's just the right thing to do. And, and I respect everybody else's opinion on this committee, but I just want to make that point because I, I think we've done quite well. And, and as we've, as we've heard on some of these other programs, every year, we add substantial money to the budget for a lot of these programs, every year. And, and I, and I'll save some of my other comments, not relating to this issue, for another time, but I think the Quincy Public Schools does it very, very well, and I just want to acknowledge that.
I just want to weigh in myself. What I worry about when we do something like this, especially on the school side, is who's not being recognized? So there's another group out there that maybe doesn't have as many members, but they're not being recognized. So are they going to feel less than? I think what we do with our cultural fairs in all of our schools is phenomenal because every culture is represented, every culture is strengthened, and to Mrs. Pertios's point, the Lunar New Year celebration, which the city really manages with them, and the summer one, are phenomenal events. It shows the city cares and the cultural events show that, that we care. But every time you put one group in, I mean, except for Good Friday, which I would like to get rid of, I don't see us of having, except a holiday that somebody else has mandated that, that reflects one culture above any other culture. And you can say Christmas does, but that's a state holiday, that's a federal holiday. So I, I think this is, what bothers me is when I look at those cultural fairs and I go to the, the summer program where they have that outdoor wonderful thing, and I see all those different nationalities in our schools having booths and sharing food and talking about the great things they do, I just worry that when we elevate one group, it would, this would be the one group that's ever had that done in our school system. And those other people may feel like, what about me?
To Mrs. Lebo's point, I certainly wouldn't want any child to feel less than, and, and making this decision would, I, I don't think that's an exercise in that. I think if you go to any of these cultural fairs, which I know you all have been at, no, no one culture is trying to outdo the other, it's just trying to shine all of, a light on all of their cultures. And I think that when you raise one up, you raise them all up. And if we have a higher percentage of student body in some of these other ones and it mandates us having this conversation again, so be it. So maybe that's the time we look at Good Friday, I'm not sure, but don't let fear of something else prevent us from doing what's right for a, the, a large, the, the highest percentage of our student body. This is their, their holiday and they're coming to us and asking. So not raising one up is putting them all down, in my opinion. So we'll find a way for these others, but I firmly believe that this is the right thing to do and the right time to do it.
I respectfully disagree with that. I, I don't think it raises everybody up, I think it makes some people say, what about me? I really do, and I think that that's unfortunate. It, it means if you only have 10% of the population, we shouldn't acknowledge them in some way, or if we only have 7% of the population. I just don't get how we, I, I just don't know how we get the, I think the cities and the schools do a lot, a lot with this, and I just don't know that this is the thing that it's going to be, in my opinion.
I'd just like to make one further point for the public, and that is, all of the holidays we have are all in the contracts of all our employees, so to take one away to exchange is, is not that simple. I just want to make that clarification. I would not be supporting the taking away of Good Friday from, from my perspective. And that, that is one that has respected the Christian culture for many, many years. When the Jewish population was larger 50 years ago, school system did not add any holy days on the Jewish calendar for whatever reason. I think Columbus Day has become a day, not just about Columbus story, although that's been certainly under attack for, I'm not going to want to get into that, but it's also been one that's been embraced by the Italian community, it's really become a nod to the Italian community. So there's no perfect solution here, and I recognize that, and, but I still think that we have a, a fairly large population of, of Asian descent now that I think deserve the nod. So, thank you.
So we'll move the calendar to April 10th and, yes?
Procedural question?
Yes, sir.
And, and this is maybe for the superintendent or Laura, if amendments can still be made before the final vote?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I have a procedural question as well. Proceed. Uh, procedurally, so the calendar option that was voted out of the subcommittee, the only calendar voted out is the one that does not include Lunar New Year. Are we able at the April 10th meeting to vote on an option that does include Lunar New Year?
If I can answer that. It's kind of similar to what school committee and Gattro just said, it's, it'll be on the floor of the next meeting, people can make amendments, people can make motions, you know, before the final vote, so.
Okay.
But what's before us will be what came out of the subcommittee.
All set? Okay. Let's see, next on our agenda, additional business, there's none. And communications, we have upcoming school committee meetings, regular meetings on April 10th, May 8th, and May 22nd, June 12th at 6:30 PM at the, all at 6:30 PM at the Cottington Building. Upcoming subcommittee meetings at the Cottington Building will be March 27th, teaching and learning at 6:00 PM, policy at 7:00. April 24th, quarterly budget and finance at 6:00, teaching and learning at 6:15, policy at 7:00 PM. Mrs. Lebo?
May I make one addition to this from some communication we got since the agenda was delivered?
Uh huh.
We, we see some communication from the chair of the Holliston School Committee, I don't know if you've all got to see that or not, but I would like to know if we could get Mr. Malaney to weigh in on it with us before we, I would like to consider doing that, but I'd like to have him weighing on, maybe the mayor, weigh in on that also before we make a decision.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so that will be on the next agenda in communications. Reports of subcommittee, Special Education Committee, Mrs. Pertios.
Thank you. So on Wednesday, March 13th, we had a Special Education Subcommittee meeting, which had one item on the agenda. Special Education Director Julie Graham, Coordinator Jennifer Leary, and Team Administrator Simone Buckley presented an overview of the new Massachusetts Individual Education Program, the IEP format, which is an update of the format that was introduced in 2003. And the new format aims to make the family and student voices more prominent, terminology more accessible to students and families, and transition planning more integrated. The team went through a section by, went through the new IEP format, section by section, detailing the changes to the new format. And use of this new format will begin in September, 2024.
Okay, thank you. And policy, Mr. Gattro?
Well, we just covered that, but the short story is Superintendent Mulvey shared the results of the QPS School Calendar Survey and all of the details he referenced earlier in terms of the percentage. And I think the two, two issues where we got majorities across students, parents and staff were, don't start before Labor Day and, and don't consolidate March and April vacation, excuse me, February and April vacations into a March vacation. The rest of it, rest of the survey results were in the, you know, 20, 30, 40% range across different spectrums. So those policy minute, policy subcommittee meeting minutes will be online?
Yes.
Yes.
All set. So motion to adjourn? No, yeah, no executive session tonight, so. Motion, yes.
Oh, do we need a motion to remove those?
Yes.
I'll make, can I make a motion?
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to remove those two items from subcommittee. Yep.
All set? Yep.